Recording in progress.
Okay, um adequate notice of this meeting of the zoning board of adjustment was sent by email to the Asbury Park Press and the CoStar our official newspapers on January fourteenth two thousand twenty-two and notice of the meeting was posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. I take roll call, Mr. Lisco?
Here.
Mr. Greg?
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Ms. Dietz?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Malango?
Here.
Mr. Palmizzano?
Here.
Ms. Drzenovich?
Here.
And Mr. Coppoli and Mr. Drews are absent. Um, just wanna say a couple of things real quick since it's our first time back on Zoom. Um, for the members on the public that are here, um, you will stay listed as an attendee until your application is called up and then you will be promoted to a panelist so you can turn your video on and participate. Um, and then when the members of the public, when we get to public comment sections, you'll click the raise hand button and then we'll call on you one by one. All right, it's all yours. Oh, John, you're muted.
Look at that, out of practice happen so easily. Welcome everybody to the January twenty-seventh twenty-two uh board of adjustments meeting. Will you please join the board in the flag of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
And the flag of the United States.
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, liberty and justice for all.
The Republic of the United States.
All right, thank you everybody. We got a lot on the agenda tonight. Uh, first up is the oath of office for uh well, Bob Coppoli, Chuck Ross, Mark Fitzgerald, and Phil Gray.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, uh good evening. Could I just do one real quick procedural thing before we get to that?
Ah, of course.
Uh, just um, uh, in terms of the public meeting notice to uh supplement what April has indicated, this is the January uh twenty-seventh two thousand twenty-two uh virtual meeting of the uh Belmar Zoning Board of Adjustment. And in accordance with New Jersey law, including the open public meetings, I have notice of this meeting was printed in two newspapers and it was posted in the clerk's office and it was posted on the bulletin board. And I think April even, even though it's not a statutory requirement, we we put it on the municipal website as well. And uh also, uh just for the record, we uh re-noticed the public hearing. Um, the uh public notice, uh the annual meeting statement to include the login information uh for all the reasons that we have gone through. And April, just in case, we'll say this at the beginning of each application, but just in case anyone is having access issues or uh questions about the computer system, do you have an email uh that you could give them there where they could contact you or phone number?
Uh, yes, clerk@belmar.com.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, uh against that backdrop, I would respectfully submit that this is a lawfully convened uh meeting in accordance with New Jersey law. So now for the reason that you called on me, Mr. Chairman, um I have oaths of office to read for uh or to swear in. Um, Bob Coppoli, who's not here tonight, April, correct?
Correct.
All right, so we have Chuck Ross, Mark Fitzgerald, and uh Phil Gregg. And uh, Mr. Chairman, what I would ask is that we um have all three uh members stand at the same time, all raise their right hand. And when I say state your name, we'll start with Chuck. He can say his name and then Mark and then Phil, and then you can recite um repeat after me uh in unison if that's acceptable.
Sounds good, Mr. Kennedy, thank you.
So uh everyone appears uh to be standing, say uh aye and we'll start with uh Chuck, state your name, please.
Aye, Chuck Ross.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I'm Mark Fitzgerald.
And Mr. Gray? Okay, do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Sowfully swear.
That I will support
That I will support.
support the Constitution
Constitution.
of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of the United States. And the Constitution
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution. of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey. And that I will
And that I will.
I will.
bear true faith and allegiance
Bear true faith and allegiance.
bear true faith and allegiance.
to the same
To the same.
to the same. and to the governments
And to the governments.
and to the governments. established
Established.
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 in the United States
In the United States.
in the United States. and in this state
And in this state.
and in this state. under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
under the authority of the people.
And that I will
And that I will.
I will.
faithfully
Faithfully.
impartially
Impartially.
and justly
And justly.
and justly.
perform all the duties
Perform all the duties.
perform all the duties.
of a member
Of a member.
of a member.
of the Belmar Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Of the Belmar Zoning Board of Adjustment.
according to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, gentlemen, you're all recorded. And April, just make a a note that next meeting will uh re- uh remind us to swear in Mr. Coppoli.
Well, then.
Thanks, Mr. Ken- thanks, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, next up is the nomination for chair. Um, I'm the chair right now. I would be pleased to do it again, but uh, Mr. Kennedy, I think I think you do you run this part of it?
Yeah, typically what we've done in the past is, well, um, if this is acceptable to the board, I'll ask for uh nominations for uh individuals to serve as chair. And um, we'll see if there's any interest in and how many, and then we'll have a vote. So that having been said, can I have uh a motion to nominate anyone or any individuals to serve as chair of the Belmar Zoning Board for calendar year two thousand twenty-two?
I'll nominate nominate John. Oh, sorry.
Nominate John?
Okay, so Phil, was that you?
Yeah, I did nominate John, yes.
Okay, so you're nominating John Lisco. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a second to that.
I'll second.
And then is there a nomination uh to uh nominate any other individual to serve as chair?
I'd like to nominate Mark Fitzgerald, please.
Okay, so Ali, you are nominating Mark Fitzgerald, and is there a second to that?
Second. Second.
I'll second.
Okay, so there's a second uh for Mark. And is there anyone else uh willing or any other nominations to be made? For individuals to serve as chair? Okay, uh now April, how do you wanna do this? Like we um, so we have John Lisco and Mark uh nominated for chair. Um. April, you wanna just uh do a roll call?
You do roll call, sure.
Now, now just so I know, um, in terms of how many uh, we're taking uh seven votes, I'm assuming?
Oh, right, and the person that was nominated can vote or no?
Yes, absolutely.
on their own self? Yeah, so the only one, um Anne Marie would be the only one that wouldn't be voting.
Yes. Okay, Ben, and that is because she is alternate?
She's um, she's an alternate, yep, and she's member number eight.
Okay, and uh do we have seven members to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Uh, and then, Mr. uh uh John and Mark, I defer to you as to um whether you wanna take a a minute uh to uh say anything to the board members or just take a vote. It's it there's no uh gate, there's no rule that has to be done either way.
Mark, did you wanna say anything or?
I I don't have any comments, John. I I, you know, I just I just would hope, you know, depending on how it turns out, that there wouldn't be any uh hard feelings, you know, between us. Um, you know, I I think you've done a fine job. Uh, you know, I just would be happy to do it as well and, you know, maybe just, you know, have a change, but, you know, if it turns out that, you know, you stay on as chair, I would be perfectly comfortable with that as well.
Of course.
All right, John.
Yeah, I I didn't, it works out. I just say, yeah, go ahead with the vote.
Okay, so April, I guess um, uh this will be on vote for chairman and uh the people, uh board members can say Mr. Lisco or Mr. Fitzgerald.
Okay. Um. Uh, Mr. Greg?
I'm voting for John Lisco. I couldn't be happier with the job that he's doing.
Uh, Ms. Dietz?
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Mr. Ross?
I mean, I like I like both of them, but uh I think John's been doing a great job, so I'll go I'll go with John, 'cause uh I think he he's done a nice job, so.
Uh, Mr. Malango?
Um, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Okay, Mr. Palmizzano?
Uh, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Um, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Uh, myself.
Uh, Mr. Lisco?
I would vote for myself.
All right, so that's uh four to three for Mark Fitzgerald.
Hey, congratulations, Mark.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, and thank you, John.
Of course.
Anything else to wrap up there?
I guess we have vice uh nominations for vice chair.
Yeah, so.
And we'll do the same process.
I need somebody else. Ready to share?
Mr. Kennedy.
I'd like to nominate Chuck Ross.
Um, could you, uh, uh, so just if you could hold for one second, I just have a question, uh, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, for the cases that John has been leading, uh, does he continue or would he continue to lead them? Uh, you know, like for instance, this application's uh for Third Avenue. He was chair at that meeting. Will he continue as?
Uh, no, I I think you you would you would be chair uh for for the for the meeting, but obviously you could defer to his
Okay.
expertise and familiarity with the file as as needed.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess, um, uh, Mark, if it's okay, can I ask if there's any nominations for a vice chair?
Sure, um, I think Phil just nominated Chuck. Um.
Okay.
I would I would love to nominate John. Uh, so.
All right, so so ho- hold on one second. So there was a no- uh nomination for Chuck Ross, and is there a second to that nomination?
I'll second that.
Okay, all right, and then uh, Mr. Fitzgerald, you are nominating?
John.
John, okay, John Lisco. Is there a second to that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. And is there any other nominations uh for individuals to serve as uh vice chair? Okay, so now, uh, uh, Charles and John A., uh, do you both uh just want to proceed and or do you wanna say anything to the board members?
I do not, I'm okay to proceed.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with proceeding and.
Okay, so April, same rules. Uh, we called uh the seven board members.
All right, so, uh, Mr. Ross? I would vote for John.
Uh, man, I think I think John would do a great job. I mean, uh, you know, I I I I'll do my duty, but uh, you know, I I really uh did enjoy working for John, so, you know, I I have a lot of respect for him, so I'll vote for John. I have a lot of respect.
Okay, uh, Mr. Lisco?
I am gonna vote for Chuck Ross. I think he'd be a, I think he'd do a fantastic job.
Mr. Greg?
Chuck Ross.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Phil, you just, you're you're voting for Chuck as well?
Yeah, I nominate.
Oh, okay, John, I'll vote for John.
Ms. Dietz?
I'll vote for Chuck.
Mr. Malango?
I vote for John.
And Mr. Palmizzano?
Uh, John.
All right, John wins.
Congratulations, John. That's pretty funny.
Looked like Chuck was sweating up there, though.
Yeah. Well, thank you, everybody.
Okay, that is. That's that's uh, Mr. Chairman, Fitzgerald, back back to you.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to the approval of the December sixteenth minutes that April sent out earlier in the month?
So you have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Lisco?
Yes.
Mr. Greg?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Malango?
Yes.
Mr. Palmizzano?
Yes.
Okay, so minutes have been approved. Uh, so uh, Mr. Kennedy, moving to the resolutions for board secretary and board attorney, uh, do you have those prepared?
Uh, no, April, I don't. I think uh.
Uh, yeah, I did. Um, I thought I emailed them to everybody, sorry. Um, it's the same ones we adopt every year. Appointing myself as the secretary and Kevin as the attorney.
Is there any uh, is there any need to read them or just can we just refer to them now?
Mr. Chairman, with with what I would suggest is with the board secretary, uh, you can um make your uh motion.
Um.
And then when it comes to uh board attorney, you can make a motion and whatever the result of that motion is, we can put the resolution on it the next meeting just to, you know,
Okay.
lock it all up.
All right, so let's let's have a motion.
I I I have the resolutions. They're, it's the same resolution that we do every year.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Um, and it's just, they're generic resolutions.
Okay.
And Kevin's rate has not increased as he's charging the same rate.
Okay, uh, so
That works.
uh, with that, if there's no reason to actually read the resolutions themselves, uh, we'd be looking for someone to make a motion to approve. We'll start with the word, uh, April, uh, Bodeo as board secretary for twelve more months.
Any motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
All right, so guys, Ms. Dietz and Mr. Ross.
Great. Can we vote?
Yeah, just all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained, okay?
Okay, and uh similar for our board attorney, uh, Mr. Kevin Kennedy. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Okay.
So make that motion.
All right, we'll go uh, we'll go with uh.
I'll second. I'll second.
Second.
We got Malango and Ross.
Fight, uh, fight motion and Ross second.
All right, all in favor?
You know, April, if you can just because technically there is money involved in that, I think technically we need to do a a roll call vote on that one just to be
Aye.
uh, the owners get a little upset if it's not a roll call, I mean, if it's not roll call.
Sure. Okay, Mr. Lisco?
Yes.
Mr. Greg?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Malango?
Yes.
Mr. Palmizzano?
Yes.
Well, uh, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I've been fortunate uh to have been the board attorney for a number of years and I'm happy to say I'm still very honored by it and I very much like it and I very much appreciate the appointment and I look forward to working with you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. April, I see that there's a resolution regarding remote meeting protocols. If you could just really just summarize that for us and you can make a motion.
Right, yeah, that's the uh resolution we adopted last year when we uh first started doing Zoom and it just outlines the process for that.
No changes to that from last year?
No changes.
Okay, could we see a motion to approve the resolution for remote meeting?
Any motion?
Do you have a second? Fine. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right.
Next resolution is the uh application for Belmar Legacy LLC twelve oh six Ocean Avenue. Mr. Kennedy, any comments on that resolution?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, uh, this one is
Twelve oh six.
Belmar uh Legacy. So this was for the uh construction of uh a landscaped bed. And I think the uh, we made some, uh, the resolution was submitted and the uh applicant's attorney had some uh uh gave me the missing technical information. And I think the conditions of note included, uh, the inclusion of a note confirming that the lot covered at the site shall not exceed sixty-five percent, i.e. the minimum amount referenced on the amended uh plans approved herein and that additionally the lot coverage calculation shall be verified by the borough engineer. And I think uh the subsequent correspondence indicated that the lot coverage came in at fifty-nine percent. And there was inclusion of a note confirming that the nature of the replacement fill, uh, Phil, I think this was your your uh uh particular condition. The inclusion of a note confirming that the nature of the replacement fill and dirt shall be similar in quality to the existing type of soil at the site and that information shall be verified by the board engineer. Also revising the plans to confirm that the post landscaping wall installation runoff shall not change the nature and level of the existing water runoff at the site, again confirmed by the borough engineer. And it was also um, the engineer, borough engineer review and approve the brading plan submitted by the applicant to confirm compliance with the comments raised in the um, the uh, the Anas Abaki and Inc. review memorandum. And we also wanted them to submit a duly authorized zoning application to the borough of Belmar, but I think the nature of the application that really, that was sort of a a miss uh or that step was not addressed. And obviously compliance with all the promises and commitments and representations that the applicants made during the public hearing process. And I think that was the um, the gist, sir.
Okay, can we have motion to approve the uh application for twelve oh six Ocean Avenue?
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Lisco?
Yes.
Mr. Greg?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Malango?
Yes.
Mr. Palmizzano?
Yes.
Okay, moving to the next item, the application of Emma and Mark Spagnolo Spagnolo uh at five nineteen thirteenth Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, that was an application that was approved and that was uh seeking uh approval for the construction of an addition and several improvements to the main principal dwelling located on the lot and a refurbishing of the existing garage apartment structure on the site. And that resolution has been uh presented to you and George McGill, the applicant's attorney, gave me the uh technical information that we were uh missing. And the conditions of note included, uh, the applicants are respectfully encouraged to review the load capacity of the existing foundations that they're professional builders and contractors and representatives so as to confirm the acceptability of the same. And we wanted the plans revised so as to include a note confirming that the siding or stone shall be, I'm sorry, that siding or stone shall be placed along the horizontal bottom of the elevation so as to permanently and appropriately mask and camouflage the exposed cement area of the exposed foundation areas. Also note confirming that the generator shall be located in a zoning compliant location. Another note confirming that additional landscaping detail shall be reviewed and approved by the engineer and the landscaping at the site shall be perpetually maintained and replaced and replanted. And um, I think you all wanted me to put in here, in approving the application, the board did not grant any impervious coverage variance relief. Thus, if the applicants exceed allowable impervious coverage, they shall be required to formally petition uh the zoning board for such relief. And compliance with prevailing FEMA regulations. And I think that was the gist of the uh conditions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, if we could get a motion to approve for Emma and Marx Spagnolo five nineteen thirteen.
Make the motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, thank you. So that's been.
Okay, Mr. Lisco?
Yes.
Mr. Greg?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Malango?
Yes.
Mr. Palmizzano?
Yes.
Okay, moving to the next item, uh, apparently Allison Gerard at one hundred twentieth Avenue, which we previously approved, is requesting an extension for the work to begin?
Uh, yes, wrote a letter. Um, it states, I am writing to you and the zoning board for approvals to extend my variance approvals to enclose my third floor until June of two thousand twenty-three. I am looking to extend the variance approvals from one hundred twentieth Avenue because I haven't been able to secure a contractor and lumber costs are prohibitive at this time. And that's from Allison Gerard.
Okay. Uh, I don't think, is there anything to go over with that, uh, Mr. President?
How old is that? Approval, April, the original.
Um, just approved it last year.
Okay.
I believe it was.
What, do you know the default, the the default time from approval till expiration? I'm just curious what the what the interval is.
Thank you.
Like, if we approve something today, how long is it good for before they have to request an extension?
Well, we could grant
I I did.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead, April.
No, I'm just gonna say she's requesting an extension through June of two thousand twenty-three.
Right.
So we get if the board grants it, we would put, we, there would be a shelf life on it.
Right, but what if today something got approved? How how long is it good for?
Oh, well, so like many things, it's a sort of a dip, uh, we generally put in our contract, I mean, in our resolutions a a two-year timeframe, but just as an aside, there is uh within, at least two years within which they obtain the the building permits. And just as an aside, there is a uh, a sort of a permit extension act of two thousand twenty that is in place that basically says that if an extension, I'm sorry, if a uh an approval would otherwise expire during the period of time when the COVID emergency regulations are in effect, they're sort of barring unusual circumstances or sort of a already and a, an extension granted per by, you know, state law to begin with. So basically, the answer is, you know, two years is what we generally have, um, unless otherwise indicated.
I think she would have got to twenty twenty-three anyway then by the two-year rule, but, okay, uh, if we could have a motion uh to uh approve the extension till uh June of two thousand twenty-three for uh Allison Gerard?
I'll make I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second? I'll s- I'll second. I can't remember if I abstained from the original one. Um, I'm not sure if I'm within the um uh, I'm a neighbor, but I don't I don't know if I was able, I can't remember if I was uh.
Then probably out of the bonuses of caution, why don't you, I would respectfully submit, you just, you know, probably.
I'll sec- I'll second that, April.
Thanks, let me look. I can tell you real quick.
Second.
See. Hmm. Okay. Uh, no, Ms. Dietz, you did participate.
Oh, I did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're good. Okay, so um, I got a first and a second. Um, Mr. Lisco?
Yes.
Mr. Greg?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Abstained.
Ms. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Malango?
Yes.
And Mr. Palmizzano?
Yes.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, on that, instead of what we've typically done, doesn't mean we have to continue it, but we've typically just had April write a letter to the applicant and note it in the file and copy to the construction office as opposed to doing a resolution and having the applicants having to pay a little bit more uh escrow. So if that's okay, we can just uh direct, respectfully direct our friend April to notify everyone via via letter.
Sounds good. Wouldn't rate to vote on that, right, Mr. Kennedy?
No, no, sir.
Yeah, okay, all right, great. All right, any other business take care before we hear the first case?
Uh, if you wanna just announce that uh number four, the application on the agenda is gonna be postponed.
Oh, okay, great. Yeah, thank you, yeah. Uh, postponing till March, the uh ten twelve Main Street, uh, Husker due, uh coffee place, so we'll 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 be here for three applications in a night.
And Mr. uh Chairman, just just for the record, the um applicant uh has consented to this, correct, April?
Correct.
And uh, it's gonna be carried until March twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-two, but April, I believe, given the circumstances and the length of time, I believe the applicant has indicated they will re-notice.
Um, yes, he he requested that we carry it until the March meeting, but anticipated that most likely they will be submitting um new exhibits and presenting to the board hopefully in April, and that's why they will re- be re-noticing.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, April. Uh, so with that, if we could uh pick up on the uh first application of William and Jody Stapleton through thirteen third Avenue and April, if you please uh tell us who the qualified mem- uh zoning uh board members uh for this uh
Uh, sure, it's Mr. Uh, Mr. Lisco, Mr. Ross, Mr. Malango, Ms. Drzenovich.
who is out of the board.
And and then Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr.. and and then Mister Fitzgerald and Mister Gray.
Okay, and so that means uh Ms. Dietz and.
So can I, should I step down? I can step down at this point, so Mr. Vinovich can take the seat? Is that going to be appropriate?
You're um, you can, but just so you know, you are uh one hundred percent allowed to stay and uh participate and ask questions, and it's just a matter of if there's a vote tonight, uh you you wouldn't be a voting member.
Yep, Mister Kennedy, I I don't mean to contradict you, but I don't think Ms. Dietz read in on the uh prior session.
Right, so she's not able to vote.
Right. But you're saying if she listened in tonight, listened in on the prior session, she'd be able to vote at a future meeting if it carried forward?
Yeah, I mean, so she she can, uh like I said, she doesn't have to, what I was, I meant to say is she does not have to remove herself from the proceeding, she can, uh but if we just vote tonight, she would not be voting.
As annual. Okay, great, okay.
And April, um.
But wait, let me just clarify that. So if it came to a vote and I have to abstain, but Mr. Vinovich would then not be able to vote?
No, I just wanna, I won't call your name, I'll call hers instead.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
She's not eligible to vote tonight.
Okay, got it, thank you.
And uh Mister Chairman, there's a couple of procedural things here, if uh with your permission, I'd like to um
Please.
to address them. Uh first up is uh April, just give me the um the list again of who's eligible to vote tonight.
Uh Lisco, Ross, Malango, Drizetovich, Fitzgerald, and Gray.
So I'm counting six.
Yes.
So we don't have seven eligible voters tonight?
Uh no, Ms. Dietz and Mister Palazzano did not listen to the previous meeting and Mister Coppoli and Mister Drews, who were present at that time, uh are not here tonight.
Okay, so uh Mister Chairman, let me just do a couple of real quick things, okay? So number one, uh before I forget, let me uh swear in uh Ted, uh Ted Bianchi. Ted, you're the zoning officer and the construction official. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extension provider will be the truth to the best of your knowledge to help you, God?
I do.
Okay, and Mister Chairman, we um, there was uh, just for the record, there was, well, we're gonna mark into this was uh, this application was commenced uh on September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. And as I recall, right before um the the vote, the application, the the meeting was essentially closed. Uh but the vote, uh Mister Shipers as the applicant's attorney uh didn't have seven votes and opted not to proceed. So we carried it for the purpose of a vote. So let me just say for the record, uh Phil Gray and uh Mark Fitzgerald uh both certified that they uh listened to the tapes of that September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one meeting, uh which again, shout out to both of you because it sometimes jams up if we're not. So why don't we mark as B one, B for board, the certification of uh Chairman Fitzgerald that he reviewed the transcripts of the September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one meeting. And B two would be the certification of Phil Gray that he uh reviewed those same transcripts. And uh of that September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one meeting thus being eligible to vote tonight. So now, Mister Chairman, uh and a couple of other uh procedural things. Number one, we adjourned that meeting uh because there was not seven eligible members. And uh Mister Shipers was was concerned about proceeding. So we're gonna ask Mister Shipers momentarily if he wishes to proceed uh tonight with the six, knowing that there's six. Uh number two, I uh April and I have received a communication from uh Ronald Gazarovski, who is an attorney, who is uh representing an objector and wants to participate. I indicated that that the hearing was, you know, there was a school of thought that said the hearing was over. And I know he wanted to address the board, so uh and whether or not the board.
He is here and he has his hand raised for the last few minutes.
Okay, and then on top of that, Mister Chairman, just for the record, uh uh Bill Shipers on behalf of his applicant was good enough to renotice. When we left the meeting in September, uh we did not require him to renotice. However, uh because of the fact that uh life has changed again and we went to the uh remote meeting, uh he was good enough to renotice and put the login information in there. And April, just for the record, um can you uh announce your email address again in case anyone is having technological or access issues?
Uh clerk@belmar.com.
Okay, and so Mister Chairman, I I defer to you, but I know that April's saying Mister Gazarovski wants to speak. And uh do you think the first line of questioning should be for Mister um Shipers as to whether or not he he wishes to proceed tonight, knowing that he has only six?
Yes, I mean, that was the problem uh at the end of the meeting in September and and apparently that's still an issue. So yes, I think Mister Shiper should speak for that, and then depending on his answer, we can decide how we'll handle it from here.
Uh first of all, uh William Shiper, Chairman Shiper, Zelonsky, Delmar Esproza, pleasure tonight representing the Stapletons, they're both in my office. You can see Phil over my shoulder, Jody is not far away. Um I want to say um proud to be back in twenty-two. Congratulations to Mister Fitzgerald, congratulations to Mister Lisco. And uh Mister Ross, uh congratulations on being a full board member and almost a chairman. Uh perhaps, but for your vote for Mister, uh place chairman, but for your vote for Mister Lisco.
Thank you, thank you.
I love the camaraderie amongst the board, uh and I enjoy being with the board always. Uh Mister Fitzgerald, Mister Chairman, you kind of hit it spot on, and I mean, the issue and difficulty last time when we presented was we uh we had the meeting, uh for Mister Gazarovski's benefit, uh we had the meeting, uh uh public was closed, presentations were closed. I I was done, uh and then we went to uh comment and about to vote. And uh we were done and Mister Stapleton and I conferred. And it was our decision, uh because it's a uh use variance, uh required five affirmative votes, that we would uh request seven full members, voting members, uh make the decision. To some uh dismay, but I I will understand this as Mister Stapleton, we understand COVID, we understand the problems, we understand the world we're now in, uh but it's still the same problem we had back in, I guess, September. And Mister Stapleton, Miss Stapleton, uh who do elect to uh request seven board members. So with that, uh I think the position would be tonight is not tonight.
Okay, uh and and Mister Chairman, um because Ron Gazarovski is here asking to be speaking, can we at least make, allow him to make uh, you know, enter his appearance, so to speak?
Can can we, all right, so before we go forward, there's something uh I just wanted to just mention and 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 Mister Kennedy, maybe we have to determine this offline for future, but uh Mister Shipers and and Mister Stapleton agreed, Mister and Miss Stapleton agreed to go forward with six votes in September. They knew there was only six votes on the panel, they decided to go forward with the six votes. When it came time to get a read, when it looked like they didn't have the five they needed, they opted to defer to a full seven-member board, okay? I understand it, I understand it's their right to do that, but also going with the six, wouldn't that compel to vote to the six too or or pull the application? That would be typical protocol. So I don't understand how this carryover was happened, because here we are with six again now, and I don't want this to be a problem with the board. It was it was um the the applicant's decision to go forward with six in September at the beginning of of the case.
Yeah, and 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 that's a valid point, and it's something that, you know, if that's the pleasure of the board, we can do. I do recall, and I'll I'll have to confirm this, but I do recall that at the beginning of the meeting, I think uh there was indication that they could at least present the testimony and determine later on whether or not to have a vote. Now, maybe that's something that we don't want to allow anymore, but I think we did that at the time because our agendas were very, very busy, and I think we had three special meetings in the summer. And we had another special meeting in November, and we obviously have a special uh meeting next week. And I think that there was a a concern that uh because of the backlog of the agendas, we didn't want um and and again, we're also recalled that there were some applications, and I think you all have already said as a new protocol method, we sort of want to, you know, we've been sort of annoyed at some last-minute uh adjournment request because just for this reason, we didn't put other things on the agenda. So to your point, I think the reason that we did it was because we didn't want to, the agenda space was so uh uh precious. Uh but to your point, if that is a policy, we can certainly say.
Well, just just for, just just, well, let's let's, we're not talking about it now, but let's get this decided because I see the quandary we're in at this moment, because if there is an objector, uh you know, we're, how do we, how do, how does the 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 protocol allow for more conversation around this when we were imminently about the vote? So I I would imagine it would be up to the applicant, I don't know if 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 it's for us to decide or the applicant to decide whether object, whether the objector has an opportunity now, when they had opportunity to speak in September and weren't here and chose not to, whether we open it back up for an objector to come back in and start, you know, um getting involved. I'm not against doing that, I just wanted to make sure we get it right.
Yeah, and and I think that's uh an excellent summation. And uh I think my recollection, and I certainly defer to you, is is that the the matter was closed and we had the board discussion and the board vote was imminent. So uh there is one school of thought that says you have the board vote and and that and that's where we are. If the applicant wants to reopen or if the board wants to reopen, that would be another another uh question.
Yeah, Mister Shipers, are you uh, are are you, were were you planning or would you like to open back up for further discussion regarding this application? Have any changes or modifications been made since September? Is there anything new or different since September that you'd like to share with the board?
Uh multiple question there, but all the answers are no.
So uh are you, would you be opposed to uh allowing additional uh conversation or testimony to occur at this point? Or are you uh open to allowing that to 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 happen? And by the way, I don't know that is your call. If I, I will go to Kevin and say, I think it's the board's call, but I'm just trying to get a feel from you.
I would agree with you, sir, yes.
On, you know, um your your opinion on that.
Uh my opinion and my client's opinion is that it is done, we're not looking for it to be reopened. And we're looking for a vote of seven members. Uh I will just submit, Mister Fitzgerald, I've probably appeared before the Belmar boards for twenty-plus years. Uh there have been several instances where uh hearings were started uh and effectively got to the vote with less than seven, where applicants requested seven and the board granted it. So I understand your concern, but I think past practice and procedure, um I I don't want there to be a sitter out there that were doing something dubious, different. Uh something that did not occur multiple times in the past.
But.
I'm somewhat concerned, Mister Fitzgerald, that there, there was an implication made that we were trying to be fast or loose or practice hard this year. We certainly were not.
I'm not sure if anyone made that implication, but I will say that your decision to not go with the six that night and look for a seventh opens it up for the people who read in, me myself being one of them, and I I think somebody else read, listened in also. Emery, was that you who listened in?
Phil, uh Phil Gray.
Oh, Phil. So Phil and I have the opportunity to now question what we heard, because we didn't in September, right? So we're eligible voting members now, so we would certainly be able to open to that. I think once we open to that, we open up again to public comment. So that would be my feeling on this, but I would defer to the vote of the board whether or not they feel taking that direction would be appropriate and let this, let 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 the um the people in the audience have an opportunity to speak.
Well, I I would defer to Mister Kennedy. I think all the people in the audience had their opportunities to speak at the hearing last night, and we now have uh
Yeah, but now Phil and I, Phil and I have, but Mister Shipers, Phil and I have listened in. And as new voting members on this case, we have the opportunity to ask you questions about the case, so we would open it back up. Once we open it up, the things that we discuss are now open to public public comment again. So we're opening it back up because Phil and I might be asking some questions.
Uh I would defer to Mister Kennedy on that procedure.
Mister Kennedy, I mean, if we open it back up and Phil and I have the right to ask additional questions, does that obligate, that would obligate us to open it back up, correct?
I I think if, yes, if 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 you have questions, um and uh yes, I think if there's questions, uh it's at least opened up on a a somewhat level, that that at least, you know, further uh information can be presented on that, on that new information, on the new questions. Um then, but uh you know, that's really, I don't know if if you all have questions and we're gonna, you know, we'll see that in a little bit, I don't know if we're gonna even get that far tonight. But I I do believe with you, it's gonna be uh a board determination. I think with, in the position of everybody else is relevant and interesting, but I would say it's gonna be a board decision.
All right, I will, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mister Chairman, yeah, if I could, um I think the only question I would have is, I feel like that might be dangerous precedent that anytime we were to ask questions after we closed the public session, we would have to reopen it, the public session again. We do that quite often where we'll hear the public's comments, we'll close public session, and then we'll somebody will come up with another question and we don't then reopen it to the public. So I would, I that's my only comment, I just feel like if we do that now, then we're gonna be having to do that anytime one of us asks a follow-on question after we close public comment.
And I think that what I would say is, if I if I may, well, two things. Number one, it's that, you know, if the board members who weren't here have the questions, but that's number one. The other thing is, it's a general discussion on uh judicial economy. Uh basically, and I'm not trying to, you know, uh uh recommend any course of action, but basically, we handle cases like the courts handle cases. We want to get the disputes done in a thorough and prompt and efficient and and legally sanctioned fashion. And the the basically, the case being you have, you know, one trial, one case, um and you're not allowed to bring the same case back and forth, and you know, that wouldn't be efficient. We, as a zoning board, are quasi judicial agency, that that's no different. We obviously have to be complete and thorough and respectful and give everybody within reason an opportunity to speak, an opportunity to participate, an opportunity to ask questions, an opportunity to make questions. And as indicated, we have to let people speak and uh speak their mind, and that's a no-brainer, and we've done that. So in our situation here, back in September, we had the testimony, we had the testimony from the witnesses, we had board questions, we had public questions, we had public comments, and then we had uh board deliberations. And then it was adjourned for the purposes of of the vote because of the the request for a complement of seven board members. So the question becomes, do we want to technically reopen the case? And you know.
Mister Kenny, let's let's let us just vote on it. I I'm, I personally am inclined to to, if there's additional information or if there's an objector or there's uh information that the board was not privy to and this has not been voted on, so it hasn't been finalized, we as a board have the right to reopen a question and answer or reopen public comment uh because there may be new information here, uh you know, new board members voting. Uh you know, I personally do have some questions, so my vote would be uh where I would make a move for the board to decide whether we would want to reopen it. Hey, hey, John, nice uh first chairmanship case I'm getting here. Um uh yeah, so uh I would like to go to the board and ask that the board decide whether or not uh they would want to uh I I I think we're liar heads here, because if we don't reopen it. they would want to, I, I, I think we're liar heads here because if we don't reopen it, Phil and I, you know, are, are sort of not in a, not in a position to have, I think if, if we open it and Phil and I are asking questions, I think the case is open and then we could decide whether or not we want to allow additional questions or conversations coming from the public.
And Mr. Chairman, may I just add one caveat to that? I, I think in conjunction with that, you may want to decide, I mean, questions is one thing, and I think the next thing would be, are, do you want to allow, you know, the witnesses to be subject to redirect from the other attorney and/or from Bill Shipers?
Yeah. There's no prohibition, there's no prohibition for we as a board to reopen public comment if we choose to and we feel it's necessary. And I think that's what the vote is, 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 are we, I, I don't think we could go right to a vote without reopening the case, letting Phil and I ask some questions, and then going back to the public one last time. But I'm willing to let the board members decide. I don't want to put my own opinion or influence. I think, I think each board member has an equal vote like I do. And my vote would be to allow the case to be reopened, let Phil and I ask questions, and then open back up for public comment. And we've done that, Chuck, to address you, we've done that multiple times, where we've opened up the public comment and reopened again. So I don't think that this would be a dangerous precedent. It's, it's typical of what we do. So that would be, so if there's a motion to allow the case to reopen for, for the questions and then public comment?
Mr. Chairman, if I may make a furthering word.
Go ahead.
You know, I perceive a difference between board members reopening for board member comments, or questions, I'm sorry, and maybe comments. But I think there's, there's this slippery slope that Mr. Ross pointed out on public comment, where retrying what has already been tried. So does reopen mean we're gonna retry? I then need to bring back my engineer, I may need to bring in an architect, I need to be prepared for an objector presentation that we're going to now reopen and effectively do a objector do-over, I mean.
It's a valid point. It's a valid point.
At least one, at least one, I'm sorry, at least one object, I'm, this is tough by the computer. At least one objector, I think it was Mr. Murray, if I remember correctly, hello, Mr. Murray, if you're out there. He had his say, he was at the meeting. I do not know, have not been informed who Mr. Gazarovski represents, whether he's now representing Mr. Murray, Mr. Murray, and someone else, or some other individual as well. So I'm not, I, I'm not sure where this is going or requesting to be going, but I think there's very, you know, dangerous slippery slope.
All right, all right, all right. I, I tend to agree, I think the slippery slope started when you agreed to go with six members, and then when you got to a vote, you asked for a seventh, where you previously had conceded a six-member vote panel, Mr. Shipers. But that's what are under the bridge at this stage. Are you gonna go forward with the six-member vote tonight, or are you gonna defer?
No, I'm not gonna go forward with tonight. I'm gonna make another comment, Mr. Fitzgerald. I did not say I was acquiescing to a six-member vote. You were not there, you may have read the transcript, but I was there, I remember. And the protocol is, and it's always been, with six or five, the protocol has always allowed a determination as to whether you move forward with your vote, or request a seventh board member, or sixth and seventh board member. I take issue with, with the comment that, that I agreed to move forward to a vote with six board members. That certainly was not the case. Mr. Kennedy knows this matter, I think, and I don't think he's going to attest that that was the agreement or stipulation. There was no stipulation at the outset that we're gonna go with six board members. So twice now, you've said to me and the public that we are trying to do something other than what we agreed to, and that is incorrect.
Mr. Shipers, I will stand corrected in terms of, you did agree to go forward with six members through the hearing, okay? That is accurate, okay? You always had the right to pull your application because you, you needed seven, right? But coming back for seven, then, implicit in that is to reopen the, the case, reopen the application. It's implicit in, 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 in your deferring when you did that, that we're gonna have more questions now. And, and other board members also may have thought about things since, since September, had more questions, or visited the site. So it didn't, wouldn't be open just to Phil and I. We would open it back up for board questions total, and then, as we've done in the past, we'd open up for public comment. So anyway, I think the board has to take this under control. I think the board needs to vote on how they'd like to proceed with this application, knowing what we have. And then, Mr. Shipers, if you're not willing to go forward tonight, then, you know, Mr. Kennedy, I would defer to you whether or not we have any, you know, legality issues here with the sequence of events that happened in September and then, and then.
No, we, we, if, if the board, we would, we would, either way, it sounds like we're gonna carry it to another meeting, so that he has the full complement of seven voting board members. And I think, Mr. Chairman, you're looking for a vote to, basically, when it is continued, to reopen in terms of public comment.
Yes, I, I think that, again, assuming that there's, there's no legal problems associated with it, I think that the new members that are listening in on the case or read the transcript have a right to ask, once we open up that, the rest of the board members have a right to ask, once we open up that, the public comment section has a right to be reopened again. That, that is my opinion, but I'm willing to see whether or not the board agrees with that.
Sure.
Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Fitzgerald, by that statement, that seems to imply to me that you're, you would open it to comment, but not testimony, not additional witnesses, simply to comment, correct?
I, I think that would be a legal issue, Mr. Kennedy, that Mr. Kennedy would have to either research and answer back, or advise the board on, because I don't know the answer to the question.
And I'll, it sounds like it's one of those times that I don't have to give an answer tonight, so it, it sounds, but, Mr. Chairman, did you want to have a, a motion for when it is reopened to at least reopen it for public comment?
Reopen for, for full board questions as well as public comment.
Public comment, okay. So I guess we should just unofficially, would that be your, your motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, but, Mr. Kennedy, the question that Mr. Shipers asked is remaining unanswered, whether or not beyond public comment, if, if we were to reopen it, if, if other aspects could now come in, come into it, or it would be simple, of, of, of board member, board member questions followed by public comment and then vote. That, you have to answer that question, whether or not anything other than that would be allowed.
The witnesses have, have been sworn and subject to public comment and board member questions. And so I would say you reopen it and you reopen it to the public comment. Mr. Gazarovski gets to speak, unless you want to open it to have witnesses recalled and redirect and recross. And I don't think I heard that tonight. What I heard is carry it and have board members new, or apt, previously apted board members, or even other board members, ask questions and have opened it up for public comment again. I would, if that's acceptable to the board, I would find that that is, under the circumstances, that is legally acceptable.
Any objections from board members or anything that, should we vote on it? I mean.
I have a comment. Can I make a comment, please?
Please, please, Mr.
Mark, I, I believe I'm the most senior member here. Out of all the years that I've been a member, I don't think we've ever reopened a case like this. Not that it can't be done, but I don't think we ever have. And if any questions are asked by either you or I, they should be asked, I think, in front of the two other members that are not here tonight, in the event that, they would have to listen to this transcript if we, if we open any part of the case or have any mention of anything of this case tonight. We still wouldn't have seven voting members. We're, we're speaking in front of six voting members.
Phil, the, the case was never closed, so there's no reopening. It's still open, remains open, okay? You're saying we're reopening the case. It's not reopening. It's, it's never been solved, and until the vote's final, we as a board have the right to circle back and, and with additional information, ask additional questions, and as would the public. So that's, that's.
Yeah, I, I've already said my piece, but I guess my position is that I have no problem, I think you and, Mr. Gregg can definitely ask questions. I don't think that you then necessarily have to open up to the public. And it might not be that applicable in this application, but we get large, large applications with multiple, multiple meetings, and if every time we get a new board member and they want to ask a question, we then have to reopen it up for all public to talk that's there. I think that's, that's never been done. So that's my only objection to this, to this. I think you and Mr. Gregg definitely have the right to ask questions, but that does not mean that you then have to reopen to the public. So maybe let's just, why don't we just play it by ear and see what you guys ask and see if it's necessary, and if it brings any new information to the table? Why bind ourselves now to say, yeah, we're gonna open it to the public again? I, I mean, let's see what, what, what new information is, is on the table before.
If we're not going to, if we're not going to a vote tonight, I, I don't, I don't, I don't see, I don't see where that, that is helpful. I, I mean.
Well, I don't see why we have to decide tonight, I guess, is my point.
We need seven members. I mean, we need seven, the applicant would like seven members voting. Just that simple. We don't have seven members, so do we?
No, I get it. But I, I mean, why, I don't think we should make a motion now to say we're gonna definitely open it to the public next meeting. Let's see what's presented. If no new facts are presented, it's already been done.
Mr. Chairman, the attorney that's here tonight presenting against the public, was he under the impression that every, the testimony was not complete? Do we know that?
We would have to swear him in to find out, Mr. Malongo. That, that, that's not something we could, we could presume or, and it, you know.
I, I think it would be important to find out if he did not, did not understand that the testimony was complete.
Well, Mr. Kennedy spoke today.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I spoke with Ron on a number of occasions, and I know he's listening to the public. I know he had indicated that he wants to, at least at one point, he had wanted to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. I don't know if that's still in the case. I know when I spoke to him earlier today, he at least wanted to give a summation, or public comment, if I guess what we would call it. But again, I, I can't speak for him. I don't know if, if his thoughts and comments are, have changed since I spoke to him, or changed since he listened to this.
The opportunity to do that was September. I, I mean, the opportunity, I, that, that's.
Well, that, that's, I think what we're saying, we get to a point, we want to make sure that if you are going to quote-unquote "open up" any portion of the meeting, I think the concept is you want to be very limited or very specific on what you're allowing, whether you're gonna allow cross-examination of witnesses, or whether that's done and you're just allowing the public comment.
Okay. You know what we're gonna do, we're, Mr. Shipers, we're gonna ask you, with, with, knowing we have six members, would you like to go forward tonight?
No. As I indicated at the outset, we wanted six then, or we wanted seven then, we want seven now. And, and whoever brought up the, the, the point, I think it's pretty inhumane. Certainly, you have a quorum of six, or whatever you prefer, so I don't challenge that in any way. But certainly, the seventh, whoever the seventh is going to be, you know, the boards have four alternates and changes and remorse from meeting to meeting. But I think that that person should listen to both the seventeen, the September meeting and tonight's meeting, so they understand.
Absolutely, positively, yes.
Great suggestion, great suggestion. Okay, so we're not gonna hear this case this evening. I would ask that Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Shipers come to some discussion or agreement on what would be viewed acceptable for the next time this gets rescheduled in terms of proceeding and make sure that.
And I would speak with Mr. Gazarovski.
Right, and, and ensure, and ensure that legally, we're not doing anything that would be a problem in terms of, you know, whatever the outcome is, and it be grounds for appeal. So I just want to make sure that we don't make any mistakes. All right.
I appreciate that. And, and, Mr. Chairman, would I ask then April to give us a, a date certain for this continued hearing?
Just, Mr. Gazarovski has been raising his hand a lot, and he just sent me an email asking why he's not being given the chance to speak.
I, I could address that if you don't mind. So, so we are not opening up this case to public session at this point, and we have not made a decision on whether we're gonna reopen this case to additional testimony. The applicant has decided, based on us only having six voting members, eligible members tonight, to push this application. He made that decision. That made further comment about the content of the application no longer eligible to discuss tonight. So with that, you know, the board just, we just took a temperature of the board, and the board, you know, feels, you know, come back in the next meeting, and we're advising that Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Shipers, you know, come to some, you know, conversation about what we.
And I would speak with Mr. Gazarovski as well.
Yeah, in, in fairness, yeah, you should do that as well, just, just to make sure that when we go forward with this case on the new date, that we don't run into this problem over again, because I don't think this is a board decision. I think this is a legal matter, and, Mr. Kennedy, I think you need to advise this board on what to do. April, your new date.
Okay, and, April, we should, what would the next hearing date be?
Well, that's what we have to figure out. We have a meeting on Monday, the, this, coming up, the 31st, and then our next meeting is February 24th or March 24th. So it really depends. Mr. Campoli will be there at the Monday, the 31st meeting. I don't know who's going to be in attendance for February yet. So it would be up to Ms.
Just for the record, April, I will not be there on the 24th. I will not be able to be there. Right.
Right, and so I would need to know if Mr. Camazano and Ms. Dietz would be able to make time to listen to the September meeting, and when they could do that.
I would not be able to listen to it prior to Monday's meeting, the 31st, unless there's some way you could send it to me. I'm not in, I can't get to, to Belmar, so.
Okay.
Uh, hey, for how long is the, the tape?
It was an hour at most, I think.
Mr. Chairman, what I would suggest, and I'm gonna probably overstep my bounds here, but next week's, I mean, there, there's, it's a very fluid situation in terms of one person being, and April, we have two, at least two, or at least four people who have to listen to some portion of the tape. So I would respectfully submit that that might be a tall order to be done by next Thursday. And to, in order to maximize the amount of, but I defer to you.
So, so we're looking at February 24th. Is that acceptable, Mr. Shipers, to you, as a rescheduled date?
Well.
That is kind of the Belmar end continuation.
Bingo. My understanding was just that we were bringing the Belmar end back on February 24th, and if not concluded, which I have optimism, but not betting a farm on, that we had March to finish up and be done with. I was optimistic that by the end of March, we'd finally have a vote on that. You know, I, I don't relish putting this on for the 24th, for a couple reasons. One, I'm gonna be game on on the 24th with the Belmar end, and I, I want to be unified in purpose if possible. And two, I want to utilize what, what we put off months ago for that day, for the Belmar end, to get it as much as we can to, to get, get to the end of the road on, on that application. Now, I, I have a little pain and consternation that I think March is filling up, so if the Belmar end does not finish in February, then, then I, you know, I'm seeing April, I'm seeing May, and that application needs to be concluded and voted upon. But if, if, if the Belmar, if the Belmar end.
What's an acceptable alternate date, Mr. Shipers?
If the Belmar end is not gonna be heard in March, if it continues, then I would suggest March.
So we're gonna re-slot this application for the March meeting, on March 24th, April, and hopefully between now and then, you know, Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Shipers, and, and the other attorney who's been attempting to speak tonight, have an opportunity to figure out the protocol for the March 24th proceeding.
And it'll be a re-noticing, correct, Mr. Chairman?
I don't believe that would be necessary, but I would ask that the, that the website be updated April, right? You, you would do that anyway, right, on what's being heard on the 24th?
Right.
And so, Mr. Chairman, just for, I know, for the. And so, Mr. Chairman, just for, I know, for the record, there's going to be a motion that we carry this matter. Um, again, the parameters to be determined to March twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-two at six o'clock P M without the need for any further public notice. And April, at this point, is it, we think it's still a remote meeting?
Um, no, March, um, should be in person unless something changes between now and then and things get worse again. But the goal is to be in person.
Okay, and just for the record, Mr. Schypers, do you, on behalf of your client, consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has to act?
Yes.
Okay, and I would encourage all members or members of the public to either contact the board secretary or monitor the website um, for the latest developments regarding the, you know, COVID impact on live meetings or remote meetings. So, Mr. Chairman, we could have a motion to that effect if that's acceptable.
Yes, and would someone make a motion to move this application to the twenty fourth of March?
So.
Thank you, Mr. Malongo.
Give a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay.
Thank you for your time this evening, and everyone be safe.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schypers. Okay, uh, unless anyone needs a break, I'd like to move this second application, Francis and Karen Rea, four twenty-one Twelfth Avenue, and this continuation from the December meeting.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, um, we are going to do a couple of things here. So Ted Bianchi, for the second time tonight, let's swear you in. You are the zoning officer and construction official for the, uh, borough of Belmar. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
I do.
Okay, and April, can you tell what we, um, what exhibits we left off on?
Um, hold on one sec. Um, let's see.
I can just start with A ten.
Sorry, I don't have it.
No problem. So I'm gonna start, uh, as A, uh, ten is going to be um, proposed site plan, generator specifications and bollard details. It's prepared by Minaviri Vanmark, Vandermark Architecture, and it is dated, um, well, let's see, last revised January fifth, two thousand twenty-two. So that's A ten. Um, we have A, uh, A eleven is going to be um, uh, she, A one oh one of the Minaviri Vandermark Architecture specifications. And then A twelve is we have, uh, this was what was submitted in April's updated package. Um, a survey prepared by Control Layouts Inc. and it's dated May first, two thousand eighteen. And we have A thirteen is a narrative. A fourteen, we have, uh, Generact, uh, generator, uh, details and specifications. And A fifteen, we have a picture of the, uh, the, uh, structure on the property. And, Mr. Chairman, again, just for the record, when we carried this in December, we did not require renotice. But given the pandemic and the remote meeting, the applicant was good enough to renotice. Uh, and April, before we bring in, uh, Carl Cromer, is there anyone here at the risk of stealing the chair's thunder like he asked the first time? What's the lineup? Do we have eligible voters tonight and how many of them?
Oh, hold on, let me pull it minutes back up. Uh, yeah, Mr. Palazzano was the only one, uh, that was not here last month.
All right, so that means we have how many eligible voters, one, two, three?
We still have seven, because, um, Anne Marie can take his place.
Okay. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, should I turn it over to, uh, Mr. Cromer, the applicant's attorney?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Good evening, board members. Since the last board meeting, we went back to the drawing board, and we picked a location that we think is the best location given all of the alternatives. Um, the location that we picked is shown on exhibit A eleven. It's this red box that is on the Twelfth Avenue side right here near the corner of the house. We picked that spot for different reasons. The location where the parking driveway is, we thought wasn't a good, suitable location for various reasons. One is that it would cause us to lose parking. Second is that there are windows in that location that would prevent the installation of a generator. Also, we were concerned with the flow and movement of cars around that area. There's also, the board was considering the location where the pool is, maybe in the area between D Street and the pool. That too was problematic because it would be within the twenty-foot setback. So considering all of that, we think that this new location is the best one. The board was concerned with possible accidents related to the driveway that's near there. So what we are proposing to mitigate that risk is to elevate the generator, put it on a concrete pad, put curving around it so that the car, if it veers off, won't hit the generator. And also to put bollards around, which are indicated and shown on the drawing. So that pretty much sums up the application and our thought process and and why we think this is the best location for the unique circumstances that we're working with. Again, I'm just mentioning that this is a corner lot, so we are, really have two front yards, and we don't have many options that we could work with. But this generator is something that's going to be needed during these times when the bad weather that may be here tomorrow is going to knock out the power, and the occupants inside would like to keep the heat on, keep the electric on, and keep the food from spoiling.
And is that it for your additional testimony this evening?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'd like to open up to additional board questions now then, starting with Mr. Malongo.
Thank you, Mr. Baron. Um, I've visited, I I actually visited this property, and our first survey that we had, I guess you all know, was showing a garage between the pool and the house, which obviously we can see is not there now. I think the first location for that generator on the first application was right behind the two condensers for the A C units, which you can see there in the square. So this location, I I think this location, in my opinion, is a safer location than what was proposed in the first application. I don't really have any question regarding the location of this generator.
Thank you, Mr. Malongo. I'm gonna go according to way my screen is shown here in Holly, you're up next, followed by John and Phil.
Thank you. Um, I also, uh, I I like, I think this location is better. I'm I'm glad you're able to put the protection around it, which seemed to be a concern last time. So, um, considering some of the constraints you have with the lot, I think this is a much, much better location.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dietz. Uh, Mr. Gray, Greg?
All right, um, I've looked it over, I'm looking at the plans, and moving a generator towards the front of the house, towards the street, I don't think solves any problem. And in both locations alongside that neighbor's driveway, I believe it does not pass the code, and I don't think we would even have the right to to put it there or approve putting it there. Those bollards are too close to the, to the generator. I believe that, uh, we heard testimony from Ted that these things had to be much further away in case they got hit. They would contact the generator causing a problem. And I still believe that there's room over by the, uh, application, applicant's pool. Uh, granted, it would cost them more, and they, their testimony was that the wiring could not run that far. But Ted had testified to us that they could run that far. I believe Ted, I believe that that's the best place for it. Get it away from this driveway. You're putting it in spots where your neighbor can't even open up the car door, let alone, certainly, we're not even talking about hitting it. You know, with if the, if the car got out of control somehow, who knows what can happen? It's got gas in, propane down or natural gas in it, and, um, I don't believe it belongs alongside that driveway at all. And I don't believe there's any room to put it there legally. So I think it belongs over by the pool and run the wires over to the house underneath that bricklayer driveway. You just got to pull the bricklayers up. Yes, it will be more expensive, and I believe that's probably why it's not being put there. But you can test, you can, you can counteract by, uh, contradict my testimony or whatever you want, but that's what I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Uh, John, before I get to you, I just wanted to, Mr. Kennedy, are you there?
Yes.
Uh, because Mr. Craig has brought up some questions about whether or not this is even legal, therefore making us voting on it a moot point. We certainly wouldn't want to vote on something that isn't legal, right? So I I get a little concerned with even continuing forward if Mr. Craig is right, that this is not a legal location. Um, we shouldn't even be contemplating it. So, uh, how do we get some confidence or surety on his assessment?
Well, number one, we can ask the applicant, and we can also, uh, uh, have, see if Ted can weigh in on it, uh, see if Ted has any, if Ted has knowledge on it. And if not, we get the information from the applicant. It's their burden to prove to us.
Okay, um, okay, let's go through the rest of the board members, and then we 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 cannot let this legality question just, just, um, fester there. So, uh, Mr. Lisko, please.
Yeah, that's, that is really the question that I have for the applicant, and then to see if Mr. Kennedy agrees. Um, are those bollards far enough away? Can they be put far enough away and be protective of that generator the way the code calls for? That's a question to the applicant first.
Mr. Cromer.
Sir, I, I haven't heard anything that makes it illegal. Does Mr. Craig have any code violation that makes it illegal?
I'm actually asking you if if they are installed per the code.
I I believe that they are. I don't have any indication showing otherwise.
Is Mr. Bianchi on?
Yeah, I'm here, uh, John.
Yeah, uh, is that, is that correct? They are shown, I guess, co-compliant in co-compliant locations with the generator?
I I have a few questions. Actually, I'm going to elevate this. How high would you elevate?
Uh, hold on, I think I have that detail here. Ryan, do you have that detail?
Yeah, yes, I do. Can, am I speaking? Can you see me?
Yeah, while we just, um, Mr. Chairman, just because the hearing was last year, technically it was only in December, can I, can I just re-swear the witness in?
Yes, sure.
All right, uh, so Brian, state your name again.
Uh, Ryan Rayan.
I'm sorry, is it Ryan or Brian?
Ryan, R Y A N, R A I A.
All right, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, can I speak?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so the concrete pad underneath it will be eighteen inches high. So at the finished height with the generator on top of it, it will be a total of sixty inches height in the air. And then also in addition to the left and the right of, uh, the generator, there will be a bumper of six extra inches. So it gives more depth in case something does, uh, go into its way. It almost acts as a bumper in regards to after, in addition to the pads and the bollards. Um, that's pretty much, uh, in regards to the pad. Any other questions? Um, in regards to the neighbor, uh, we also submitted a letter from the neighbor, uh, four nineteen, the owning property owner, uh, who showed that no complaints to this placement with their property, uh, and nothing like that.
And he's here to testify in support.
Thank you for that.
See, if this is going to be elevated high enough where a car bumper can't run into this, it shouldn't be a problem. As an alternative, you don't have to have a bollard. If you raise this up in the air, a car can't hit it. That's in the fire code. So.
And do you know how high that has to be?
That's a good question.
Well, I mean, you got to get it up high enough where a car's not going to hit it. So, I mean, I I do these in Behead, they've got them six feet in the air. You know, um, it does, there's no set thing, just as long as a car can't damage the generator, that's the big issue.
I mean, give or take, roughly, you know, it sounds like four feet would do it. So would would the applicant be willing to raise this higher to accommodate what Mr. Bianchi just just mentioned?
Yes, uh, whatever height you guys require, we would be open to whatever height.
Mr. Lisko, any more questions?
Uh, no, I I just want to make sure that as they're raising it, that it still stays in a code-compliant location. It doesn't approach those other windows on that side.
Um, so their only opening on that, uh, location is, uh, hatch into the under. We're gonna close that hatch in so there it's completely closed and move that hatch, uh, that crawl space hatch elsewhere along the concrete line, probably towards the back end. So it's completely solid. There's no windows on, uh, that location, uh, at all.
And how far away from it is it from the next window?
Um.
If you raise it four feet in the air, and I guess it's, you know.
John, I I would say, if you could raise that three feet, that that would be enough. A car's not going to damage that.
Okay, and then it's not, and then it's not coming in near the, and then that window, there's no problem there.
Correct, long as it's five feet from the window, five feet from an opening, uh, three feet in the air, I would say a car's not going to run into it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bianchi. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lisko. Uh, Mr. Drzenovich.
Okay, so I thought that, uh, the applicant just testified that it would be sixty inches, six zero inches, uh, raised, that platform?
To the top.
That the generator was not, is that correct?
That would be the top, but the new top now is gonna, instead of eighteen inches, it's gonna be thirty-six inches. So it's gonna be eighteen inches higher than previously mentioned, according to what Ted just asked. It was eighteen inches high, and now it's gonna be thirty-six inches high, and then the generator will start.
Okay, so.
So the competent generator will be seventy-eight.
Okay, um, and where would the bollards, these new or bollards, be positioned? Because they're not pictured on this, uh, I'm looking at.
Bollards wouldn't be required if you put this three feet in the air on a concrete platform, you wouldn't need the bollard.
Okay, so then, so now what's getting testified to is different than what's presented, right? Just to be clear, because this letter that accompanies. Just to be clear, because this letter that accompanied the photos talks about, you know, a different height and two ballards would be installed.
They're making modifications based on Ted's suggestions and the board's suggestions. That's, that's at our request that these modifications are remade, Mr. Drzenovich.
Okay.
We're, we're asking for the changes. They'd be happy to build it as previously presented, but we're asking them to make modifications.
Well, then I don't have any additional questions or concerns that, that those that have been raised by others previously.
Mr. Ross.
So I'm clear, the neighbor that's certified is the same as the applicant? So you own the property next to it, I'm assuming?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
So the neighbor, so the neighbor that has no problem with it is you?
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure that we all know that. I have no questions. I guess my only thing is, as long as it's code compliant, and it passes the code, and you don't have to make changes to pass the code to what's being approved tonight, then, you know, I guess that's good. But I, I, if any requests for change are done, I think it has to come back before the board. So that's my only comment. No questions here.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Mr. Pomassano.
Well, you've answered all the questions I was gonna ask.
And my only question is, you know, you're reflecting two condensers there that are already in the side yard setback. Was a variance issue for that, for, for lack of clearance for the two condensers? Because they, they seem to be non-compliant currently as well.
That's a good question. I don't, no, there were no applications for variance for that. I didn't, you know, I, I, there was no application for variance for that originally when the house was built. No.
Is, is, and there's currently no fence along the driveway line between the condensers and where the generator is gonna go and the driveway itself, right?
No, there's no fence.
Okay, I have no further questions. Mr. Kennedy, summary, I guess, or?
Sure, I guess, Carlton, do you have any other witnesses?
Ryan, do you have anything else to add?
No, I would state that even with the, the platform curving, you know, the additional height, we would additionally put the ballards, you know, as on the, on the architectural plan, additionally as well as added protection to it. We have the room to do the extra added ballards as on the extra architectural plan as well to give it extra protection to it.
Thank you. So I, I think his point is, is that we're trying, we, we intend on submitting a code compliant improvement, and we intend on going above and beyond what is code compliant by adding the ballards.
That's great.
Thank you. Nothing further.
Are there any members of the public here to speak on this application tonight?
And April, if I could just, for the record, just state your email address one more time in case people are having access issues.
arc@bomar.com. If anyone wants to speak, click the raise hand button. Doesn't look like anyone does.
Okay, if that covers that, we'll circle back to board comment, and I'll try to go in the same order. Mr. Malongo first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's the only alternative for a location there that would be more safe than in the rear yard. And as Mr. Bianchi said, if it's elevated at that height where the car bumper wouldn't hit it, we're, we're meeting the safety standards for that. So I have no agreement on the location.
Ms. Dietz.
And I agree, and I appreciate the applicant's, just their, their willingness to make all of this, you know, to do, do the added protection. And I do believe that as, as the weather is changing and getting more severe, it's, it's a good idea to have these generators to help support our household. So I, I think it, it looks good, and I appreciate all the, the adjustments made.
Mr. Craig.
Well, I appreciate the cooperation that applicant has showed by, you know, raising the generator up. I still think it is not the best location for it, I think, over by the pool, even though it would be a more expensive installation, and over by that pool is a, a much more appropriate installation than putting it in a dry, in it next to a driveway like that. So my, it would be my intention to not approve this application.
Mr. Lisko.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of this application either. I don't know that putting a generator that high in the air at the front of the house is any benefit to anybody but the homeowner. I don't, I don't see this as something that I'd be willing to approve. I, I think there's an alternate location. I think it could be made quieter and less obtrusive to the neighborhood. So I'm not in favor of this application.
Ms. Drzenovich.
I too would not be in favor of the application for the reasons that both John and, and Phil have mentioned. Though I do appreciate the changes that the applicants made so far.
Mr. Ross.
Yeah, generators are kinda tricky. You know, I think that they're becoming more the norm, especially in coastal area. I'm not opposed to it so long as it's in a code, or so long as it's code compliant with all the safety requirements. I'm a little disappointed, though, that the applicant came here tonight without knowing if it was meeting the code because we had a pretty robust discussion last time about ballards being three feet apart, and if it was raised, it had to be so high and such, and I took some notes on that. So I just feel like you probably could've came more prepared with whether it does meet the code or not. I think there's still some questions, it seems like. So with all that being said, I'm in favor of it, so long as it meets all the construction code requirements.
Mr. Pomassano.
Just listening to everybody, as long as it meets the code compliant, I'm okay with it.
Okay. So just as a reminder, our only vote here is the variance for the side setback. The other matters, this, this board is gonna defer to either construction code as to what is legal and what is not legal, and certainly that will overrule our approval that this is to be approved. I, I, this is a tough one, because I, I see both sides of this. I believe that the, the fact that this generator only runs during emergencies and, and the once a week exercise cycle makes it less problematic in a side setback than the two condensers that are sitting there are. And, you know, I, I know you own both properties, so maybe the condensers go in, nobody says anything about it, and, you know, they're there for years now. But I do think you have a, a side setback problem with your condensers as well. And I do think of a future owner of, of the property next door, if that were to ever happen, would certainly question allowing those condensers and the generator to be in the side yard setback. Having said that, though, I would very cautiously vote to approve. So with that, Mr. Kennedy, if you wanted to cover this?
Sure. And if I could just take liberty of asking one question. Carlton, just exactly what is the variance that you need? Side yard setback, I think it's five feet is required. I think sometimes your documentation says less than five feet proposed, but just so we're sure, what is exactly proposed?
The side yard is five. So we would be in the five yard, five foot setback, excuse me.
And what, what is it? Is it four feet? Is it three feet?
From the house?
No, from the side yard. Just so I know what, what specific variance.
Okay, so it's one feet, six inches from the boundary line.
All right, so five feet is required, and one foot, six inch side yard setback proposed.
That's a down rate.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I took the liberty of writing down a couple of, both at the last hearing and this hearing, of potential conditions of approval in the event the application were approved. And again, this is not the use variance, it's Ted, it's just bulk variance. So, Mr. Chairman, my notes reflect compliance with all the promises and commitments and representations the applicant's team made throughout the whole process. It's going to be elevating the garage, I'm sorry, elevating the generator on a concrete plan, having the plans revised with curbing, and compliance with all prevailing building and construction code requirements. The generator to be installed in accordance with prevailing state local requirements by licensed contractors, obviously getting all necessary permits. And again, I think the board is very clear, and it's gotta comply with all building and construction code requirements, and that's on the applicant. And if it doesn't, then, then the approval is subject to that. So if it doesn't comply, the approval doesn't, doesn't kick in. And to Mr. Ross's point, if as a result of the construction and building code requirement process, the plans change, further relief is, is necessary. There was a concern, let me see. The, the, let's see, it'll be elevated three feet, and obviously comply with all the window and five foot requirements for windows and openings. And Carlton, you had said something about, and I didn't get, you said something about relocating the crawl space hatch, was that?
Yeah, so there's an opening there that's gonna be closed.
Okay. To be closed, so we're gonna say that. And code compliant, again, any material changes come back. And I guess, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, we should probably say, just to avoid any future problems, that they were talking about the two condensers being non-compliant, and that there was no, I mean, should I say for the record that we're not legitimizing that? And I don't want anything here to be construed as granting variance approval for that. I mean, that's, I was gonna say.
Yes, please. It's not, we are not approving, we're default, de facto approving clearance for non-compliant condensers at this stage.
And, and we usually, I'm sorry, and we usually have compliant with decibel, prevailing decibel requirements. And I had written down in my last meeting about shielding and landscaping, but I don't, that's really not a condition, I don't think, correct? I don't think that, that came up. And I think we would just put in here, just for the record, that only the revised plans are being approved. And I think what, what I heard earlier is if we wanted to, you know, well, if you're into this, having the plans revised, you know, to basically say that the modification that they made tonight based upon the, the elevation and the concrete pad, just so that, that pad, I mean, just so that the plans are consistent with, with what we're approving, and there's no confusion.
So just, just to be clear on that, and that, let's just make sure it's in there, it's gonna be 1.5 feet off of the, off of the property line.
1.5 or 1.6?
No, one foot, six inches, which is 1.5 feet.
Okay, got it.
Mark, can I say something?
Please, Ted.
The generator, the connection side of the generator has to be 18 inches from the house. That's code. That's a manufacturer's spec. It has to have three foot clearance on each end and three foot of clearance in front of it. That's the manufacturer's spec. So if you're gonna have it 18 inches off the house, how wide is the generator?
Yeah, that's a good point.
What's the generator, 30 inches?
Yep. We factored, Ryan, we factored all that in, right?
Okay, you got 30 inches, you got 30 inches and 18 off the house. That's four feet. Now you've got a foot left, correct?
Yeah, so if you, I forgot what number it is. The finished concrete pad would be 37, it would be 37 inches. I believe it's 25 inches. The unit itself is 25 inches wide. So after the 18 inches, um, finished height, it would leave basically from the property line 1.6 inches. So one and a half feet after finish installed, if you put it 18 inches from the house.
That's fantastic. And, and the pad, the concrete pad should be at least six inches around past the generator.
Yes, we have no problem with that. So that would be, the concrete pad would probably fall into about one feet with the six inches extra of the concrete pad, so, so the generator.
Okay. I mean, I'm happy with this, because I'm the one that's gonna look at this signal when it's done. The building inspection, and I'm gonna be looking at it. So the board's happy with the location, I'm happy with code compliance.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, Ted. That was great. That was very helpful. Appreciate that. So, Mr. Kennedy, any other items for your summary?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, with that.
I think it contradicted the one point, or the 18 inches off the property line, and they're now within the, it's 10 inches, right?
So it's 18 inches from the house.
Right.
25 inches wide, so that's at 43 inches. That leaves you 17 inches from the property line, a little bit more than 1.1 and a half.
Plus the six inches of concrete, and that takes you into that, right? That's part of, it's the setback too, the concrete. So I'm just throwing it out there, because I think Kevin wrote down early on, you said 18 inches off the property line. It's not that, it's like 10.
The generator will be one, one and a half feet. The concrete with the six inch buffer will be 13 inches off the property line. The concrete pad, the generator would be 117 inches off the property line.
Yeah, so we gotta get it right, because you're asking for a variance approval, and you're coming up with different numbers there.
So Ted, is the variance five feet for a side yard setback required? And 13 inches is proposed, 13 inches to the concrete pad? I mean, I guess, Carlton, that would be the question for you guys.
Yeah. So the concrete pad is going to be a foot from the boundary line.
All right, so you're saying five feet is required and 12 inches is proposed? You're asking for a 12 inch variance to have the side yard, the concrete pad 12 inches from the property line.
And the generator, though, would be 18 inches, or one and a half feet from the boundary line.
It's kind of moot. It's the structure itself that's gonna be encroaching. So if the generator itself doesn't really come into play any longer, it's, it's gonna be the stand that's gonna be on.
Yeah.
Do you have dimensions for the pad? Can't we just figure, what are the dimensions of the concrete pad gonna be?
Yeah, that's, they just went through the, the.
There's six inches on each side of the generator.
So it would be.
24, 36, 36.
25. Generator says 25 inches. So six, six on each, so plus 12, so that's 37 inches?
Yeah. Yeah.
So 37 inches plus 18 inches is 55 inches, right? And you have five feet, is that 60 inches?
Correct.
So you have five inches, so it's, the pad will be five inches off the property line?
Well, well, technically, you don't add six inches from the 18 inch setback from the house, so it's only six inches on the other side towards the driveway. So it would be 18 inches plus the 25 inches for the generator, plus another six inches for the extra border pad. You're adding six inches on both sides, rather than the house is 18 inches setback on the one side, which is protected by the house, which you really don't need to offer on that side. So it would still, it would leave you with one foot from the property line where the concrete starts, from the.
That's right. So the, the request is for one foot setback. Variance.
Where five is required.
Where five is required.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy, clear?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Good. Nothing else, if, if that's not the case?
Nope, that's it, sir, thank you.
All right, I look for, well, let me ask the applicant. You would like to go forward with the vote this evening on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Okay. So with that, we will open it up to board votes. I'll make a, or I'm looking for someone to make a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Okay. So with that, let's go to the board votes. Start with Mr. Malongo. So with that, let's go to the board votes, start with Mr. Malanga.
Yes.
Ms. Dietz?
I'm sorry, Holly.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
Yes. Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Lisco?
No.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Palmasano, oh wait, I'm sorry, not voting, uh, Ms. Drzenovich.
No.
And Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Okay, so that is four yes and three no.
Oh, Mr. Kennedy, motion, motion to the application to approve?
A vote approved, April, there's no use variance here that was strictly bulk variance, correct?
Correct.
Side yard setback, so yeah, the application is approved, subject to those conditions.
Okay, congratulations, Ms. Raye.
Thank you.
Thank you, all your help.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cromer.
Thank you, board members, have a good evening.
Okay, if we could take an eight-minute break and reconvene at 8:00 PM, that'd be great.
Recording stopped.
I guess we'll wait for April. Hey, April, how you doing?
Is anybody ready?
Yeah, roll the call, please.
Recording in progress.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Lisco?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Ms. Dietz?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Malango? Here, I think.
Yeah, he's there, he's on mute though.
Mr. Palmasano?
Here.
And Ms. Drzenovich?
Here.
Okay, the next application is for 805 Ocean Avenue, Ocean Harbor Apartments. If the applicant would please step forward and introduce yourselves.
All right, and Mr. Chairman, as the applicant team comes forward, so to speak, we'll just do a couple of procedural things. Is there anyone here who had any, in the listening public, who had any questions or comments regarding the sufficiency of the notice they received? If they do, you can raise your, raise hand icon for April if they need. If they're having computer access issues, they can contact you at?
Clerk@Belmar.com.
And we'll come back to that in a minute and see if anyone's raising their hands. For the third and final time tonight, we will swear in Ted Bianchi, our zoning officer and construction official. Ted, you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best of your knowledge to help you guide.
I do.
Okay, and April, has anyone come forward with regard to noticing questions?
No.
Okay, so the board secretary and I, Mr. Chairman, reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order, so it'd be my opinion that we have jurisdiction to proceed tonight. And again, the applicant did notice with the login information, so we appreciate that. And Michael Rubino is the applicant's attorney, and we'll turn it over to him. And if he wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman, with applicants, which are companies or LLCs, just for internal conflict of interest purposes, we'd like to, just for the record, he could state who the principals are of the company, so we can make sure that we don't have any conflicts or questions by conflict. So good evening, Mr. Rubino.
Yeah, I'm on there. You know what, for one reason, this one, I'm not, can you see me on this one computer?
No.
No, I, but, but you can't on the other, I'm going to shut the other one, I'm going to shut this one down. Here I am. Okay. They have two spots, okay. All right, thank you, is Michael R. Rubino? Sure?
You can hear us?
Yes.
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good, Michael R. Rubino.
You've got two microphones on, Mike.
Are you going to turn the other one off?
Mike, you have two microphones active.
Yeah, I see that. Just leave it there for a minute. I'm sorry.
Sounds good now.
Okay, these things are enough to drug you nuts. They, I understand the need for them. Welcome, hello to the board, I haven't been in front of the Belmar board since I think COVID started, and I understand the need because of the recent illnesses and so forth to go back online. So just as an older guy, I'm not as sophisticated with my fingers and computers as we should. But this is an application on behalf of Ocean Harbor Apartments LLC. We have Mr. Legow here, who is a member of the LLC. I think he could prob, Dave, are you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, could you tell the board, and just to answer the attorney's question, who the members of the LLC are? I know there's a number of them.
Yes, it's the, essentially the Legow.
Why don't we just swear you in for the record, state your name and address, please?
David Legow.
Can I spell your last name?
L-E-G-O-W.
All right, and business address?
P.O. Box 43 in Livingston, New Jersey.
All right, and do you swear or affirm that the information and testimony you're about to provide tonight will be the truth, the best of your knowledge to help you guide?
Yes, I do.
And just for the record, are you a member of the LLC?
Yes, I'm one of the managing members of the LLC. It's comprised of essentially the Legow family.
Okay. And, all right, so, Mr. Chairman, we've heard, now that we've heard those names, is there any questions or comments about conflicts or potential conflicts of interest? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Chairman, unless you object, I would say let's give it back to Mr. Rubino to proceed.
Okay, well, it's the chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Rubino, I would ask that we focus on the variances that you're seeking, so we understand what, what areas are.
Yeah, I was going to go through that because it's a little confusing. I, you want to mark, you want me to open first, or do you want to mark any items?
No, please, no, please, go ahead, I just want to make sure that we're focusing on the variances, that's all.
That's fair.
Yeah, thank you, Mike, I'll mark in, so A1 will be the application, this is all information.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, that's in our possession already. Mr. Chairman, if I can comment for one second, please?
Sure, please, yes.
I just want to put it on the record that I'm within the mailing zone here. I'm also the neighbor across the street, but I do not have any affiliation with anybody in this organization or in the building.
What, you're in the notification zone, Mr. Malanga?
I am, yes.
So are you recusing, I think you're forced to recuse yourself, though.
That's why I want to ask Mr. Kennedy.
Yeah, well, respectfully, that is probably one of the bright line rules. If you do own property within 200 feet of the development site, out of an abundance of caution, I would respectfully suggest that you recuse yourself.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I will recuse.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin, before you get started, the chairman wanted, let me just briefly open, and then we can mark everything at the evidence, because the chairman wanted to focus on the variances.
Well, Mr. Rubino, I didn't mean to not let Mr. Kennedy put his evidence in.
Right, let's mark everything, that's fine.
All right, so A1 will be the development application. A2 is the minor land use certificate, and it's dated April 26, 2021 slash April 27, 2021. A3 is correspondence from the applicant's architect, Paul Damiano, to Mr. Rubino, and that's dated June 3, 2021. We're marking that just because it made some references to some of the plan highlights or plan changes. A4 will be the architectural plan prepared by Paul A. Damiano, and that's dated May 18, 2021, last revised November 18, 2021. A5 is the survey prepared by George J. Anderson LLC, dated June 25, 2015. A6 is a tax map sheet prepared by Beret Sol Engineering, dated December of 2001. And A7 is the Leon S. Sabakian Inc. review memorandum, is dated November, November 19, 2021, last revised January 19, 2022. I think that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I sent over a bunch of pictures for the board, I don't know how you want to handle them.
You can mark them in when you're ready, I mean, April, do we have them?
Yes, and the board, and you have them also.
Okay, so why don't we mark as A8 is a series of pictures of the property, Mike?
Correct, and some of the surrounding properties.
And surrounding properties, and they were taken by whom?
They were taken by a, late last week.
Okay, so they're accurate depictions of what exists on the site, so we'll mark them collectively as A8.
Okay, and then, I don't know if you ended up with a copy, Paul can explain it, with a copy of Paul's letter, and the letter by Jerry Frida, he asked for a breakdown of the numbers. I don't know if that worked its way over to the board, he could testify to that. But Paul did supply that, I'm not sure if April got it.
Yes, I did email it to the board, and then Paul just sent me, as this meeting had started, a revised letter, which I did email to the board as well.
Okay.
All right, so that we'll mark that as A9, and just for the record, that's a revised letter, April, from Paul Damiano to?
Regarding the parking.
Okay, and who is it to the letter, is it to you?
It was emailed to me, and it's addressed to the, the board engineer, Jerry Frida.
Okay, perfect, we'll mark that as A9.
All right, we good to go, Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, sir.
Or, Mr. Rubino?
Yeah, okay, I'm good to go, let me make a brief explanation, because this sounds a lot more complicated than it actually is, of what the applicant proposes to do, and then what variances are needed as part of it. The applicant, to start off with, if you go up to the front doorway on 9th, there's an area between the doorway, the front doorway, and then there's a vestibule area. And then you, someone who enters the building has to go through the vestibule area to get into the actual building, so that they can access the apartments from the 9th Avenue side. Because of what's happened in the last few years with COVID, the amount of packages that have been dropped off and so forth, all the applicant wants to do on the interior is take out the interior, interior vestibule line and move it to the, to be flush with the front door. So there's, that, I guess, technically counts as a change in floor ratio or expansion of a non-conforming use, but all they're doing is changing what's already there, they're taking out the interior door and windows, window blind, and just moving that in exchange for what's flush to 9th Avenue. Why they're, why they're doing that, they want to make some renovations and additions to the building. This building goes back, we researched it, it goes back to approximately 1969 or 1970. I tried to find out what zone was in effect at that time, but I was unable to. But it being a commercial building and so forth, I'm going to presume that a board back then approved this site either by way of variance or it was conforming at that time and had to approve its site plan. But I could not find an all history to that. While the applicants are doing that, that was what was filed, we originally scheduled to be on in October, and then the applicant and I had a conversation, and then they brought up the fact that they would like to add some parking spots in back, and also add a handicap in the back of the premises, that would be on the north side of the premises. So they'd like to pick up a spot and add a handicap spot on the north side of the premises. While they're doing that, they want to add a handicap ramp just off of the handicap spot, so that if somebody has a walker, wheelchair, whatever, they can get into, go up the ramp and get in or out of the building. That's basically what we're looking to do. The changes are very de minimis, if you look at the numbers, the floor area ratio would be going from 76.1 to 75.76, and the impervious coverage would be going from 75.6 to 75.76. You should note, this property is in two zones. The impervious coverage would be allowed, that impervious coverage, and building coverage would be allowed in the commercial zone. What's not allowed in the commercial zone, you're allowed commercial downstairs and residential upstairs. This is two floors of residential, that's why it's non-conforming. The western section of the building is in a residential zone, so it doesn't conform with the residential requirements, which are more, are more greater. The building coverage allowed in the residential zone is 41.1, I'm sorry, the building coverage proposed is 41.32%, 20% is allowed, and the impervious coverage is allowed at 40%, and we're at 76.76%. Again, we would be under the numbers of what's allowed in the residential zone. So we're asking for a use variance, and technically, we do need variances for the, for the slight increase in coverages. And there's a, there's a breakup of the use variance, a D4 maximum floor area ratio in the R75 zone, we're increasing that by a one-tenth of a percent, and, I'm sorry, and there's the increase in impervious coverage, which also needs a variance. That's basically why we're here.
Thank you, Mr. Rubino.
I know it's a little confusing, but I thought I.
I didn't think, I didn't think it was very confusing, but we could, we certainly have the opportunity to ask questions if anyone.
Sure, I think I want to explain, my idea tonight would be to have Mr. Damiano, who's the architect who submitted the site plan, testify first to go over what we want to do, then to have Mr. Legow testify as the owner to explain why he's doing, why he's doing what he's doing and his history with the building. And then I have Allison Coffin here tonight to testify as a planner.
Okay, proceed.
All right, so we'll swear in Mr. Damiano. Good evening, sir, if you could just state your name for the record and your business address.
Paul Damiano, 1721 Beverly Avenue, Spring Lake Heights, New Jersey.
All right, good evening, and welcome to Belmar Zoning Board. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best of your knowledge to help you guide?
I do.
Thank you, and for the record, you're testifying in your capacity as a licensed architect.
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, I know, I believe you testified at Belmar before, but if you would, just briefly go over your background as an architect and your license.
Sure, I was here two, I was in front of Belmar two months ago, and maybe, maybe, listen, a year ago, I actually did Allison Gerhart's application as well. But I've been a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey for now coming on 30 years, and have been a principal architect in a small firm here in Spring Lake Heights. We do, you know, what, a lot of residential, a lot of, some multifamily, some. We do uh, you know, what, uh a lot of residential, a lot of uh some multifamily, some commercials, some restaurants. Uh been doing that for the last 26 years. I have uh been on my board and appeared in front of many boards throughout New Jersey, including uh Belmar as recently as last year.
I'd ask that you be accepted, Mr. Chairman.
We certainly accept those qualifications, uh Mr. Rubino. Thank you, Mr. Damiano.
Okay, Paul, would you briefly describe what exists at the site? And then uh what is proposed, both uh with regard to the front entrance? And then if you would briefly describe uh what is proposed from an aesthetic standpoint, uh from the front, from the fronts of the building and the back of the building? And then after that, get into what's what we're proposing in the rear. So if you would, start off just what we're, uh just describe the site and then what we're proposing to do.
Uh okay, well, just to describe the site, we're we're facing on Ocean Avenue. We're in two zones separated by this blue line that you can see on A2. Uh Ocean Avenue side is the BC zone and then behind that is the R75 zone. That's why the chart has to compare uh each setback and each coverage with with each different zone. I think uh Mike did a, did a good job of explaining, but essentially uh I'm, if we look at the picture, uh let's see, on the left-hand side in the middle, that shows a recessed area that leads to a vestibule. Uh it is proposed that that vestibule will be pushed out five feet so that the new storefront becomes flush with the exterior wall. So that's the 60 square foot addition. That causes an increase in FAR uh that that we're talking about there, an increase in the non-conforming use of residential use on the ground floor uh for the BC zone. Um the picture next to it is a picture of the existing uh uh mailbox area. You know, there's generally packages stacked up there, especially since the pandemic. You can see it's just a a small vestibule, so the uh the four walls just being proposed to be pushed out to leave more room for packages and uh and and the like. Um I I get into more detail on A1, but while we're on the pictures, this is a picture of the rear of the property. Um this is the main entrance into the lobby. You can see on the bottom, this is uh picture number three. You can see a hatched area towards the left. That's where you enter into the main lobby. So in in looking to find a place to find a barrier-free ramp, uh we were giving up, uh and and that ramp has to go up, uh you know, over two feet, so the to to be a conforming barrier-free ramp, it becomes 24 feet long. So in order to do that, we wound up uh extending the ramp along the back and then having to shuffle the parking spaces so that the uh uh the 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 barrier-free parking space that we're adding has access to the ramp. Um so that that created some shuffling. We're not losing any park spaces. We're actually proposing to add a parking space. And the third component of the work, I'm not sure if Mike actually mentioned it, is is what what uh we, our management has done with other properties over over time is there
Yeah, I said they were, you were going to add aesthetically. I was going to leave the description to you.
Yeah, so we're going, uh there's a mansard roof, right? We established that it was built 6970. Uh mansard roof and this brick veneer, and the proposal's going to be to go ahead and um make that more of a shore, uh a shore feel on that building. Uh and 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 uh and and bring it more into the surrounding neighborhood, which is, you know, you've got the uh, you've got the residential zone here and you've got the uh, you've got the commercial zone in the front. I'm just going to go to the, to clicking on A1. Um can't see my whole drawing, but essentially uh you can see the hatched area in the front says a proposed extended vestibule poking out five feet. So that's where the added 60 square feet is. And then you see the ramp in the back where we have a net 160, 164 square feet of of coverage. Uh at that point, the striped area uh next to the barrier-free space uh becomes a, you know, where the barrier-free space can 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 take a wheelchair and 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 go up the ramp and access the building. Uh and then to do that, you see the old striping, uh old striping in orange. Uh and we had to just jiggle jiggle the parking spaces and carve out some of that grass area uh to to still have an access for for a a main access right up the stairs into the building and and for the ramp. Um in in terms of what we're looking to do with the look, uh this is sort of A3 has an overall look, but what we're doing uh is taking the brick down to just create a plinth. So they'll, that brick that's on there, you know, take off the roof, uh making a a little brick plinth. And then all the entrances and the balcony, so the entrances are are all developed to have gables and um uh AZAC trim just to mark them. Uh and they're five feet higher than the existing parapet, so there's an increase, a proposed increase in height of five feet. Uh there's different details throughout. Uh the deck sheet A4 shows trying to vary that roof line a little bit to break it down, so part of it is varying from gray to white to blue siding. And some of it is having railings, uh you know, a a a false railing detail really, and there's, you know, the flat roof is back there, nobody can access it. Um at the entry to sort of make that main entry stand out a little bit. Then a pipe rail detail sort of in the middle to break down the scale, so that's really just like a beach pipe rail. Uh and on the ends, then a a parapet detail where we're building up, building up moldings. So just in trying to break down the scale of that more in line with the residential uses uh behind it, that's really just a section. So then I go back to A1 to look at, may maybe weird to look at, but there's a blow-up of the cen- center area. So part of what, you know, also part of modernizing that look in that uh is is taking down the look of those metal pipes uh and having just uh white columns and 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 a metal roof uh to mark that entrance so it doesn't look so uh so 70s for lack of a better word, or 60s. Um oops.
So in in your opinion, just while we're on that point, uh the building is a bit a day, is a bit dated and uh we admit it needs some TLC, is that correct?
Yes, well, it needs to be, it needs to look like it fits into all everything that's going on with Belmar, so that, you know, the owners wanted it to look
The question I I was going to ask, just from a uh a planning standpoint, do you think that the proposed look is much more aesthetically appealing than what's existing there? Which is basically a a great rectangular shaped box.
Yeah, well, my, in my opinion, of of, you know, that's a, yeah, that's uh it's certainly more attractive, in my opinion.
Right, do you have anything else you want to add as far as the building? I just would like, because Mr. Frida had some questions on them, I would just ask that you go over uh the parking.
Uh okay, then actually, I just, I I had a typo, so then I brought it up and and emailed real fast, so just in terms of, in terms of the number of units and the number of spaces, uh
We should say right now there's 40 units, is that correct?
Can you see, can you see my uh, can you see my screen?
I can, I can see that.
Can you see the letter?
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got, this is the revised. Um so there are actually 17 studio units, 17 one-bedroom units and two two-bedroom units. So there's 42 units, right? And applying the math from the 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 Reese's calculation that that was provided by uh the the engineer, we would come up with 77.2 spaces if if that were applicable. Uh we'd already noted on the plan, so there's basically 42 units. There's 42 spaces in the back with now one added barrier-free space. Uh and you know, there are 14 on-street spaces that are um
Immediately
They're not always filled. I know, yeah, it's not on site, but um just. So that was, that was the answer to uh item G that was uh requesting testimony during that.
And I should add, just to make clear, there is absolutely no request as part of this application to add uh any more units or to enlarge any units, is that correct?
Uh that's correct. It is simply to, and now I've lost my A1, hopefully it's back here. No. Uh it is simply to add that, uh right, to to alleviate the 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 box problem. They're also going to change out the the window, the storefront windows and you know, the, you know, the windows and the uh the storefront entries and and it's really just modernize the whole elevation. So again, there is, there on A1, on the revised A1, you can see an elevation of the ramp uh in the back, a little partial elevation. Uh and that left side just shows the whole connection between the ramp, this, you know, some storage lockers and shelves before you get in and the ramp in the back, so.
And I'm correct, the the numbers we figured out, the uh the impervious coverage is going from 76.14 to 76.76, is that correct? So that's like half a percent. And
Yeah, the impervious coverage with, you know, adding the ramp, um and the and the additional paving to carve out the extra space.
And the building, actual building coverage itself presently exists at 41.27% and it's going to 41.32%, is that correct?
Correct.
I'm sorry, what was those numbers, Michael?
I just turned the page.
Yeah, they're they're really from the engineers where where they're, they're they're also written down.
Okay.
So.
And that's the same with the, there's a, let me just find that again. The uh maximum building coverage exists at 41.27% and it's going to, it's going up 0.005, it's going to 41.32%.
Correct, and that's a weird, right, and and you could think, so don't be misled by thinking that that's that. I did forget to mention one piece and that there's a proposed overhang when you get to the top of the ramp. Um so that's where that actual number comes from.
Okay. And the other is the floor ratio is in, is increased minimally from seven, 75.6 to 75.7, correct?
Correct, that's the 60 square feet over the, over the lot, provided by the lot.
All right. Do you have anything else you want to add?
Uh did we, did we cover, I think we covered it. Um I didn't show all the pictures that we 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 might have.
I think the the pictures that you showed, unless the board want the actual specifics, the board has the pictures. If they want to zo- uh zoom in on anything specific, you could certainly bring them up.
We we could reserve that for the question period if there's any confusion with what you presented.
Okay. Is that good, Mike? I think we lost them. Muted?
Mr. Rubino, is there any any more presentation that you need to do?
Not of Paul, I have Mr. Legal, if you want to call him next. I'm not sure you want to question Paul.
Uh well, while we open up for board questions, I'm I'm waiting for you to confirm whether you're done presenting and then we would move to board questions.
Well, I'm done, I'm done. No, I have Mr. Legal to testify and also Ms. Coffin. But I, that's all the questions I have for Paul.
Okay, yep. Okay, you can move forward.
Okay.
All right, and for the record, Mr. Legal is already under oath.
Okay. David, you could, where'd you go? Okay.
I'm right here, can you hear me?
Wait, I can hear you, I can't see you.
Okay, well, I'm on the top screen there.
Okay, that's all right. Uh just briefly, would you tell us a little bit about uh who uh Ocean Harbor Apartments is? Uh and tell us a little bit about the background of your LLC. You have a number of LLCs, is that correct?
Yes, yes, we're a small family business, been been around forever since the 50s. I've been working with the company since 1986. Uh we own and manage about 4,000 units throughout New Jersey. We have about nine properties in the uh shore area, uh have some in Brielle, a few in Spring Lake, uh uh Belmar, some in Bradley Beach. So we're familiar with the area. We've been, we owned and operated this building since 1978. We've done a lot of renovation to the property in the u- in the interior units and the hallways. We used to have the old uh uh paneling uh from the 70s and the um uh and the uh green cabinets, which was very trendy back then. Uh it is time, as we've said repeatedly here, to uh uh give the exterior a facelift. Um on on the inside, what we really have is a problem with the mails uh and the packages. Uh prior to COVID, we, a handful of tenants would get two, three packages uh a week. Now we get, uh here's a good picture of it right here. Uh it's representative, I think this was taken uh yesterday or today by my partner, uh who was down there and uh 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 you know, we, so during COVID, we're we're getting two, three packages a day per uh per tenant. And it's just, uh uh we're overloaded. We made a deal with Amazon. In the area we're going to, uh the current vestibule, we're going to have a mail and the uh uh packages. And uh they're free to the tenants. We have to, we have to pay for the uh uh for the material and licensing fee, but uh uh and they uh they get a text and the uh delivery people have a key fob to go in and out. Uh so it's a great service to the uh our occupants. Uh you know, we
And that helps you claim the interior of the premise.
Yes, it does.
The interior of the vestibule, so people don't trip over one another, the package.
Exactly, exactly correct. Um uh we thought it was a great idea while we're doing all this work uh to put in a a ramp to assist people who have trouble walking steps or who are in wheelchairs or walkers. Uh and uh so we thought, while we're doing this and there is an overhang in the back, uh most people enter, most of the occupants enter through the back with a park. Um uh I I just want to clarify too, we're replacing all the windows and the and the and the doors a- as well as the patio doors. So we're doing soup to nuts on the outside. It really spruce up the place, make it look like, as we said, uh a sure property, uh uh and in keeping with the area, there's an awful lot of new construction, even some in Belmar, but surrounding areas, this will make us much more competitive. It's just a dynamite look with the, you know, we're changing the uh uh the roof line and really uh uh giving it some pizzazz. It really, with the different color uh uh siding and uh 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 all the intricacies that uh all that eye candy, gingerbread, as we like to call it in the in the trades here, so.
You think, you think the building will be much more aesthetically appealing than what's, if the board allows us uh after what's done and what exists there right now, correct?
Oh, absolutely. It looks, it looks like a new building, absolutely.
Okay.
So we're excited.
You want the handicap spa- spot in the back to be able, so you have uh some handicap access and and a handicap parking spot, correct?
Yeah, it's, it could be for potential uh tenants or also visitors who uh uh parents of our residents, so. Thought it was a great service and uh also in the front will be a safe and secure package delivery. Uh and uh, yes.
Just to confirm what I had Paul say, none of the units are going to be expanded whatsoever and you're not adding any units, correct?
That's correct.
All right. I don't have anything else, unless you have something else you want to add.
No, I think that's uh just about covers it.
Okay, we'll move right along, uh Mr. Rubino, and we'll hold board questions until uh you're done presenting.
Okay, uh Alison, are you around? Are you on?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
Alison, uh good evening and welcome to the Belmar zoning board. If you could just uh state your name and raise your right hand.
Alison Coffin, C.O.F.F.I.N.
And because I always forget, Alison is
A planner.
Two Als and an I.
Two Als and an I. All right, good evening. If you could uh raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best of your knowledge to help you guide?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed planner, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Alison, if you would go over just also a little bit about site analysis. Well, first I have to ask the board to accept her as a planner, I'm sorry.
I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. Had my license and certification since, I believe, 2005. Uh testified in front of boards in more than 100 communities. I have been in Belmar previously, yes.
We certainly accept your credentials.
Okay, great. Okay, if you would, I jumped the gun there a little bit. Just tell us a little bit, a little bit about site analysis and the basis of the application.
Sure, the subject site that we're looking at is a forty-seven thousand five hundred square feet, slightly irregularly shaped parcel with frontages on Ocean Avenue and Ninth. The site is fully developed with a two-story apartment building and supportive parking. The applicant is requesting approval to renovate this building. The improvements include complete refacing of the structure, new roofing, enclosing the southern foyer area to increase the vestibule by sixty square feet, installing an accessible barrier-free ramp, and re-striping the parking lot to provide for a barrier-free parking space, which also increases the parking supply by one space. The property in question is split-zoned. The eastern frontage is zoned B.C., beachfront commercial, and the remainder is zoned R-75, single-family residential. The apartments are pre-existing non-conforming use in both zones. The proposed expansion of the vestibule, that sixty square feet that they're adding, technically requires a D-two variance to expand a pre-existing non-conforming use. And the existing building is also non-conforming for FAR in both zones, so this small addition to floor area increases the FAR, requiring D-four variance relief. As far as bulk variances, the only, there's some existing bulk non-conformities for frontage, for front yard and rear yard setback, but we're not altering those in any way. We are altering lot coverage, building coverage, and parking, although we're improving the parking by adding one space. It's my opinion that special reasons exist for the granting of the requested variances, and the variances.
Let me just interrupt you. I should ask Paul this, but you can testify. The, the building, the height that we're going to is only twenty-eight feet, is that correct?
That is what I have on my notes.
Okay.
If that is incorrect, Paul can jump in and tell me I'm wrong.
Okay, I'm right.
Oh, you're right.
Okay. Yeah, no, no problem. It's my opinion that special reasons exist for the granting of these variances, that the granting of the variances would not impair the intent and purpose of the master plan or the zoning ordinance, nor would they result in substantial detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. Looking first at that D-two variance, the, in the Burbidge case, the New Jersey Supreme Court examined the criteria to be considered by boards when we're looking at a D-two variance. The court determined that when the special reasons concept is applied to the expansion of an existing non-conforming use, things like appearance, aesthetics, and the compatibility of the use with the surrounding neighborhood become uniquely significant, especially if there's no evidence that the use will be discontinued, as is the case here. But the proposed expansion, however, in this case, is de minimis in nature. The applicant proposes moving southern doors from their current inset position so that they are even with the exterior facade. The purpose of this expansion is to increase the size of the vestibule to create a safe space for package delivery that is secure and doesn't allow for packages to clutter up the vestibule as we saw in that photo. The proposed expansion does not increase the number of units, the number of bedrooms, or the size of any of the existing units. It is therefore, in my opinion, that there is no detriment that results from this minor increase in the floor area with any existing footprint, but it does allow the building and its tenants to operate in a more comfortable way with regard to the incoming packages. Therefore, in this instance, the proposed expansion improves the use by removing package delivery from being out in the open in the hallway, which is an aesthetic improvement, but also a safety improvement, and it provides a more secure space for package delivery, which improves the site's security for the residents of Ocean Harbor. And FAR, floor area ratio is a planning tool which is commonly employed for limiting the intensity of the use of a property, and it's similar to density or bulk building size. And in the Randolph Town Center case, the court outlined the proofs that we would look at for the granting of an FAR variance. The court determined that an FAR variance, though it's a D variance, is distinct from a D variance for prohibited use, and it is inappropriate to apply the same sort of proof to an FAR variance as we would look at for like a D-one variance. More appropriately, the standard that we're looking at is more like a conditional use, which involves the ability of the site to support the use despite the deviation from the standard. So does that extra FAR keep this property from being able to support the use? In this instance, the property can accommodate the proposed increase in FAR. But the proposed increase in FAR is de minimis. The increased floor area is limited to that extension of the vestibule. It does not increase parking demand. As the increase is de minimis and does not increase the need for parking, residential density, or any other possible impact of the use, the site can still accommodate the use despite the additional FAR, and the variance can be granted. As for the bulk variances, they can be granted without detriment. Several of the variances are existing, those setback variances, and they're not altered by the proposed addition and site alterations. There are three variances that do need further review. There's the increase in lot coverage and building coverage from the R-75 standards, and the parking variance. The increase in building coverage in this case is de minimis. We're going from forty-one point one percent to forty-one point two percent. It's my opinion that a increase of this size is not going to result in any detriment. Likewise, the increase in lot coverage is also de minimis. It goes from seventy-six point one four to seventy-six point seven six, and this allows for the installation for the barrier-free access and parking space. And the parking is also being improved by one space, and that space is the accessible space that the applicant's proposing. So there is no increase in parking demand, but a decrease in the magnitude of the existing non-conformity for parking. The approval of the subject application here would not impair the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. The use itself is a legally pre-existing use on the site. The increase in floor area and coverage is de minimis. There is no detriment to the zone plan from the proposed minor expansion. Rather, there are substantial benefits that result from this application when we look at it in total. The outdated building exterior will be completely renovated to improve the aesthetic impact of this property on the surrounding area. The apartment building will be provided with an accessible entrance and parking space, and the off-street parking supply will be increased by one space. And the existing package delivery situation will be replaced with a more secure and frankly tidier package delivery arrangement. So for those reasons, it's my opinion that positive and special reasons exist for the granting of the variances, that they can be granted without detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, and the granting of the variances would result in an improvement to the site in a manner which is consistent with the intent and purpose of your master plan and development ordinance.
All right, that's all I have about Allison. There was one question I forgot to ask Paul. Paul, you checked the aerial, historic aerial photographs of the site, is that correct?
Yes.
And you found the building came into existence sometime in the late 60s, is that correct?
Yeah, there was, I mean, it jumped from nineteen sixty-three to nineteen seventy, so you could see that the building showed up sometime between those two, those two dates, so it was definitely there in nineteen seventy.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rubino. I think we're ready to go for board, board questions now, and we will start with Ms. Drzenovic. Drzenovic. R.V.A. Emery, I'll get that right.
Hi, it's just Drzenovic.
Drzenovic.
Let's see. About the service, the package pickup services that were mentioned by Mr. Legau, are those services only available for the residents?
Dave?
Yes. Yes, it's for the residents. It's an increased mail area, and the, the packages would be a service for the, for our residents.
But it's not going to be.
To let neighbors use this area for their packages, correct?
No.
Okay, because this is not going to be like an Amazon locker type of a situation, right?
Well, it isn't. Amazon's providing the, the lockers. They have about, a lock on about seventy percent of the business. It's not for public, it's just for our residents. And they're, in effect, you know, it's a free service. They can get packages delivered. To, you know, it's mostly for, you know, tickets, medicines, things of that sort, and, you know, it's not for the huge packages. You get a TV, it's not going to be able to fit that, but it will clean up a lot of the, the routine packages. There's different sized lockers to accommodate the demand, and they get a text on their phone, and they, they, they turn it around very quickly. So they, they have the lock on this area, so it only made sense to go with an Amazon.
So is that a source of income to the, to the LLC then?
No, we, it's a free service to the residents. We, we pay for the lockers, they install it, and I think we have to pay a license fee. I don't know all the details yet. It's just because of the size of the building, they have, it's a smaller, it's a small footprint for them, so there is no, we're not getting any revenue. It's simply a service to our residents to, for them to, you know, to secure their packages.
No, I, I do understand the usefulness of it. My concern is that it's going to turn it, you know, I don't want to, I'm trying to find out if it's going to be something like the Amazon lockers that are now on the side of the 7-Eleven, that's just down the end of your block, you know, on Eighth, wherever 7-Eleven is, and they have those Amazon lockers that are on the parking lot?
No, it's not, it's, it's not for public use. You, you, you know, you have to, it's inside, so you need a, you need a key.
An access key.
This will all be a key fob. So you get into the building with a key fob, which is programmed, and then you have, you know, they, you know, it's locked, and they, you know, you have to, I guess you have to punch in a code or something to get your package. But the way, I think the way it works, you get a text and you have a certain amount of time to get your package out. So, so it can be utilized around the clock.
Right.
This is not for anybody outside, there's not, nobody outside, all this, anything like that. This is for your tenants and to access.
They have to register with Amazon, our tenants. It's not, it's not for the, the public, it's not for anyone on the street. They have to register.
You have to have a key to get inside the place, which is only.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question.
Sure.
Thank you, Emery. Moving to Ms. Dees now. You're ready, Holly.
Don't have anything additional right now. I'd like to continue to hear, but I don't have any questions. I had the question about regarding Amazon as well, but other than that, right now I'm okay.
Great, thank you. Mr. Ross?
I have no questions. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Listo?
I just have one question for Paul. I, I think you said you were either taking the brick off the building down to a brick flint, or you're going to install a brick flint, and I had never heard that before. I just remember what that was.
Sorry, I called it a plinth, that's just, but it's just, that brown colored brick, we're going to take it up, but we're not going to go underground. We're going to cut it off at say two, two feet high, so it becomes like a base and it just breaks down the scale. So it becomes like a base of the building, so the siding doesn't come all the way down to the ground, it's stopped by that brick still. So we're going to have a, a brick detail on the bottom.
I got it.
Leave that brick, put a cap on it, you know, flash the siding, and then, so some of that brick will stay there, but just the, you know, right before, you know, like the last two feet or so.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Thank you, Mr. Listo. Mr. Gray? A couple little things. The handicap ramp, are you going to cover that for inclement weather?
Well, I don't think it was the intent to cover it.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's, it's not covered, it's, you know, it's just like we, you know, we've done for Seagroup municipal building. You know, it's just a barrier-free ramp. When you get to the top, we extended a little area over here before you get in the door, so you kind of reposition yourself and then go in. But, you know, no, we didn't, we didn't put a structure over it. We're, we're actually, you know, getting them past the, the windows of the units. Basically where we could fit it between these area ways and, you know, in the, in the curb.
Okay, I was just curious about that. It just, I've been involved with some commercial buildings and snow removal on them gets kind of critical. But it would be nice if you could, but if those windows are away, I understand you can't. And if this were to be approved by the board, when do you plan on starting this and how long do you think it'll take?
Dave?
We're figuring if it's approved next fall, and it would probably spill over into the following year.
Yeah, okay. And the brick that you're going to leave on the bottom of the building, are you just going to clean that, or are you going to refinish it, paint it, or something like that, or?
You know, we're going to, we're going to clean it up and, you know, and seal it.
And just leave it that color?
Yes. Well, I mean, do we really, you know, get that far in terms of whitewashing it? Yeah, but the, the thought was to leave the color.
Okay. That's all I have for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Pomassano?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Excellent, thank you. And Mr. Malongo?
I'm off this outpatient one.
Yeah, I thought he had refused.
I apologize. Yep, you're right. I had your name on the list and you're not in. Thank you for reminding.
I apologize myself.
I guess it's me, and I have no questions. The ones I had have already been asked. So with that.
That's our application.
Thank you, Mr. Rubino. Are there any members of the public that are here on this Zoom call that would like to speak to this application or talk?
April, one last time, why don't you just give your email?
clerk@belmar.com.
I should remember that, but I won't.
I think a running joke, right? You see any hands, April?
Uh, no.
Okay. Okay, I guess it would come at time. We'll go in the same order, minus Mr. Malongo this time. Okay, Ms. Drzenovic. Got it right there.
You got it. I would be in favor of the application. I really do appreciate the improvements that the applicant is proposing. And I'm personally, I, I think this is going to just be a fabulous improvement to this building and to that block and to Ocean Avenue. I'm so glad that the look that you are pursuing is like a shore look. I think it's going to just be an enormous improvement. I don't have any concerns about the de minimis, which almost seems, they're not even de minimis, some of these changes that you're making to the vestibule. I think it's great that you're also able to add and squeeze another parking lot, parking space in there. So I just want to express some appreciation for the work that you're going to do. And as I said, I'd be in favor of it.
You're on mute.
I can see you, but I can't hear you. Holly, Ms. Dees, go ahead.
Yes, that's okay. I'm also in favor. I think it's great, I think it's great that you're able to add a ramp to the back for, for people who need that. I think that's just a wonderful plus that sometimes, you know, we'll just add, and I think updating it and giving it a fresh look and making it fit into the shore on Ocean Avenue is going to be a great, great improvement. So, thank you, and I think it's going to be a great improvement. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ross?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the application as it was presented.
Okay, Mr. Listo?
I do, I'm in favor of the application. I think, I think this, this is a great project. It was well presented, and I really do think it's going to look good. I appreciate the fact that you poured money into this for the sake of it. Thank you.
Mr. Gray?
I kind of remember this building being built. I couldn't tell you what year it was, but I'm really happy that it's being renovated and upgraded. It's going to be very nice improvements in the neighborhood. I hope that you extend your improvements into the landscaping too, that would be really nice. But I intend on voting for this application.
Thank you, Mr. Pomassano?
I'm in favor of the application the way it was presented.
Thank you, and I am also in favor of the application. I think the changes are de minimis that caused you to have to get these variances. It's great adding handicap space, and it's also great to acknowledge that these volume of packages are a new reality and sometimes retro. and sometimes retrofits are necessary to accommodate things that have changed. So the handicap access, the ramp, and ability to handle these packages are all smart things, and the design is going to make this look like a new structure, a major structure on, you know, a major part of Ocean Avenue and 9th Avenue for us, and I think it's great dish, definitely in favor of it. So with that, Mr. Kennedy, if you would please summarize.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I took the liberty of writing down a couple of potential conditions of approval if the application bore out that way. So I think it would be, the conditions of approval would presumably include compliance with all the promises, commitments, and representations the applicant's development team made tonight, compliance with any applicable affordable housing rules and regulations the borough has, compliance with the Board Engineers Review Memorandum, compliance with any applicable outside approvals. We usually do have to, you know, get the building permits within two years and of the adoption of the resolution, and compliance with prevailing ADA regulations if applicable. And I think we talked about, I guess it was sort of an implication, Mike, that, that, that Amazon, it's not tractor-trailers, it's just the typical Federal Express site type of trucks, correct?
Right, they're pull-up trucks.
Okay.
Unless you're getting paid, you might see me pulling up with one.
Right, right. And my last question, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Gray, was, was there sort of a request for additional landscaping? Or is that not part of the play tonight?
No, I wasn't requesting it. I just wanted to say that I thought, as long as you're doing all this improvements to the building, it really would be great if you could continue, but I'm not, I'm not. These changes are wonderful the way they are, thank God you're doing it, but it would be really nice if you kept going, but I'm not asking that to be a-
We'll get to it, we'll get to it.
Okay, thanks a lot.
I agree with you, we, you know, we'll get to it. It just, let's get through the construction first. I'm sure it'll get manhandled, we'll have to replace everything as by-
I guess you will.
So, Mr. Chairman, those were the gist of our other standard conditions. Mike, are those generally acceptable to you?
Yes, they're fine.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, if that's acceptable to the board, the board is so inclined, there could be a motion.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the application for 805 Ocean Avenue?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. I'll second it, how's that?
Okay, Mr. Listo?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Palmisano?
Yes.
Ms. Drzenowicz?
Yes.
So, congratulations.
Thank you very much, appreciate the board's time and attention.
Nice job, very nice job presenting, very clear. Appreciate the improvements that we're going to see on that building.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, take care then.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, thank you.
Got your own house.
Thank you.
Is there any other business, April, or Kevin, that we need to?
Not to mine, Holly.
No.
Okay. Kevin, if you had a chance to, please give me a quick call, I got to catch up with you on something.
Sure.
I appreciate that. All right, if that's all there is, someone want to make a motion to close the meeting?
So.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.
Appreciate it.